Let me get to... the agenda here. Planning Commission selection. Are we able to? No, not yet. Okay. How much time you think you need?
They said another sleep.
Huh?
They said another sleep.
Another sleep?
Monday.
So, next meeting? Okay. Um, next item, CIC payroll agreement and pay entry. Do we have to make a motion to move that to the...
I believe that... Did Tim reach you today? He said that you guys had reached an agreement outside of that. So, yeah, so if I can approach...
We can move on past that then?
Oh, what, the pay entry?
Yeah.
Yeah. Is that right?
Okay.
Do you need to brief us?
If I, if you don't mind.
Okay.
If you don't want me to, I don't have to.
You want to wait till you... Tim said he's going to talk to you again tomorrow. So, you want to wait till we got things buttoned down even tighter?
Well...
And we can move into the budget?
I'm afraid it's going to affect some of the budget decisions. So, that's the only reason why I would like to talk about it, if I may.
I don't think we'll finalize tonight. So, just so we can streamline, I wouldn't...
You're not going to finalize the budget tonight? I don't have a intention to.
I'm not seeing whether we're going to be... I mean, a lot of it depends on how far we get down the thing on the budget. Yeah. But I don't have a problem on... I mean, because I'm not sure what's going on on the payroll thing. So, I mean, I don't have a problem. She wants to brief us. How long are you talking?
Five minutes.
Five minutes? What are you...
I'm always good to listen. I'm always good to listen to people, is what I'm trying to say.
Okay.
So, if Madam Clerk wants to speak, I'll listen.
All right.
Thank you.
Before you start, did we need to make a motion to table the planning commission?
I think you can just table it.
Yeah.
You don't have to make a motion.
Okay.
Um, the first thing I'm going to hand out to you is I got with CIC to make sure that I had 100% an idea of what it was going to cost to remove payroll and personnel from, um, CIC. So, she sent that to me. This is our, this is our contact with CIC. She's our regional manager. The next thing I'm going to hand out to you is Jennifer and I sat down and went through the contracts today and just kind of reviewed, um, cost by line item. And after I talked to Tim, he clarified one of the items that I had some questions about. But I wanted to break it down in a way that it was easy for everybody to understand what the cost is, what I was being paid for, and the reason why I was being paid that. The $6,500 that I was being paid as administrative oversight was due to we went off the State of Kansas Health Plan and took on a whole lot more duties. And so, that's why I was getting the $6,500 for that, to administer the compliance and the benefits. And no other clerk had ever done that in the past. That was new. I have, in 2023, the duties of payroll were completely moved over to the CFO, not the clerk, and I maintained that administration clear up until I took on the clerk. But the real explanation for the increase was due to, um, having to take on more administrative roles because the State of Kansas Health Plan did a lot more things. So, that's where I think the conversation came into play, to outsource for a payroll company. After doing the calculations, and Jennifer and I both looked at this, the true cost when you add in COBRA, and this doesn't even include HSA and FSA, the administration fees. I didn't even put those in there. So, the true cost for year one for COBRA administration, as well as pay entry, is $31,343. So, to cut out the payroll clerk, or to cut out my administrative fees of $6,500 and the maintenance cost of $4,405, there is an additional increase of services for $20,438 to the county. There was, I don't know if this was not disclosed to the commission, but as I was talking to Tim today, there is an employee navigator integration of $2 per employee per month. We did talk about that today. But there's all these other little instances that when you get down into the details, this is what we're seeing. The COBRA, there are some things that were still... I'm trying to get ahold of our COBRA contact. There might be $500 less that come off of this, but I wanted to put worst-case scenario in here so you could see that. Year two, some of the costs fall off. The pay entry setup cost falls off. So, for year two, it's $28,428. So, a difference of an additional cost to the county of $17,523. So, that is a detailed breakdown. The second page, how I got to those numbers is I went back through every single payroll from 9/20 of last year till 9/5 of this year to get a full year's worth of payroll, to see how many employees we actually paid. And then I took the average by month to get the charges per employee per month. So, that just kind of gives you an idea of where those amounts came from, um, to get to the $31,343 on the first page. So, this is for informational purposes. The next thing I am handing out is the actual contracts. And within the detail of the contract, I highlight the areas where there is still administrative work that will have to be processed after the customer completes the onboarding process. So, we as customers are completing that onboarding process. All required new hire information goes to the service provider. So, that's still an administrative function that will be done in-house. Same goes for payroll reports will come to the customer. There will still have to be internal controls completed, and those internal controls will still fall on my shoulders because as the clerk, I am required to book all the expenses for the county. But as you go through, there's some exclusions within the document. So, I would just highlight this still is an administrative duty throughout the document. And the $85 that I missed, that I mentioned last week, that would be if somebody in my office were not able to, if one of us, if we were both sick and we couldn't process a payroll, then they would process that payroll. So, that is really kind of off the table. That's not really a, I don't think, a concern. But we as the customer are responsible for all communication and training to our employees. And so, I do not feel like the administrative function...
Can you repeat that last part?
All of the training, it says, "The customer is responsible for all communication with the customers, our employees."
Where do you see that?
That's on page 2, 3.1.
Okay.
Um, "The customer shall not provide payroll software provider or any other service provider contact information to the customer's employees." So, that has to be filtered somewhere. I think the idea behind this was to have department heads be the ones that were responsible for making sure that their payrolls were in, all the time was incorrectly, their sick leave was incorrectly, their vacation was incorrectly. And in a perfect world, that would be awesome. But in a perfect world, that has not worked in this organization. And so, um, I just wanted to point out some of these things more so for just consideration, to step back, take a step back for a second and really look at what is still being performed through the clerk's office. And we're not, we would, we are still welcome in doing that. But when you look at this, there's still a lot of work that we're going to have to administer. The COBRA, I welcome the COBRA because the penalties are very, very high if you do not do COBRA correctly. So, you know, we've probably had about 24 employees last year after I took out, I think we did 216 W-2s, after I took out these 30 people that we do for elections, because that number gets inflated because of elections. We hire people for elections. And so, there's probably been about 24 turnover last year up to this point. And so, every one of those people, if they had benefits, they had to have a COBRA notice. So, you don't have to make a decision on this. You don't have to talk about this tonight. I just wanted to have an opportunity to present it. And I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. You said payroll was moved to CFO in 2023?
Yes.
Where was it prior?
It was in the clerk's office. But I would like to make a statement that when it was moved over to me, there was many years of 9/41s not done properly. We have lots of penalties and corrections that had to be made. And, um, it kind of goes along with the seven years of bad audits. There was things that were just not being done correctly. So, you know, I feel like we, having someone in place that can do the process is super important.
What year did it go to the CFO?
23.
20. Payroll went to CFO in 23?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And so, technically, we're down a FTE when you look at it from that perspective.
Okay. Could you, um, you were CFO in 2023?
Yes.
To win 2025?
Yes.
Okay.
Um... I started with the county in December of 2021. We had seven years of bad audits, and within a year, we had them fixed. So, for '22, I was able to get us back in line.
Okay. You wouldn't happen to have a PD for that CFO position, would you?
Yeah, I do.
Do you have a copy of it?
Mm-hmm.
All right. So, any other questions? All right, let's get to budget. Okay. So, I had with me the one that was passed out last night, and then I had a draft. Yeah. Is this the one from last night?
Last night.
Okay, I got it. And then I had the BAC's draft, original draft, which I think we changed in that last work session. So, um, and, but then I was looking today at the newspaper, and it doesn't match to this one.
The 59.936?
Uh, that matches, but some of the other numbers don't.
Because, uh, is it the Tri Valley one?
Uh, well, actually, it was off the, the...
What was off?
Page 31, the balance, or the...
From yesterday's?
The totals were off a little bit, from what was in the paper.
Okay. So, tell me what those were.
Uh, let me find it.
We did have to make a correction to Tri Valley, and as we go through the budget, I'll explain that.
Okay. Well, I didn't know. I mean, I'm just, this is what I, there we go. See if I brought the paper with me? I did not.
Um, I can look at it real quick.
If you got it, yeah. It wasn't by much. I mean, I think the tax was off by like 40 bucks.
It could be also NRP. So, let me...
I just want to make sure we're operating with the right... Find it?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I do know that there was...
So, yeah, the tax or the budget authority for expenditures was off. You see that?
Let me see where it's at. Yes, it's in the, it's in the intellectual disabilities. I can explain that one.
Okay. And then, and it wasn't much off on the tax, but it was off. But I mean, what we got last night is that with whatever corrections?
Yes.
Okay.
So, in the, after we'd already published, we got a call from, um, Tri Valley. And in 2024, there was a payment missed for them. And so, they didn't get their full allocation. Part of that was because they did, there was not enough budget authority, I think. Not something that I can go back and fix in '24. So, we, to get them their allocation in '25, we'll have to do a budget amendment for the last piece, and it's about $13,000. And so, what had to happen is there had to be a shift to... Let me go to the columns so you can see it. So, um, if you see this missed appropriation, it's on line 26. I'll try to highlight it. Yeah. So, that's what was missed in '24. And they almost always get $55,000, and you can see they only got $41,250. And so, since that appropriation was missed, we need to make up for it. And there's the cash reserve down here. I'm going to try and highlight as we go through these things so it makes it easier for the public. So, you can see the $13,341. That's a cash carryover. So, the money's there, just needs to be paid out. And so, we'll do a budget amendment. That's why that's red, $68,341. That's red. So, we need to do a budget amendment. And so, we are levying for the full $50,000, $55,000 that they asked for, which is very normal. That's normal. So, to make up for that, it had to be made up in the general fund.
Okay.
So, I reduced the reserves.
So, why did we budget for '21 instead of '55 if we always budget for '55?
That would have been in 2024.
Oh, then '24. What do you mean? Why did we budget for '21?
'41.
Oh, we didn't budget for '41. That's not a budget. Your '24 column is actual expenditure. So, that's your audited financials. So, in '24, we're showing what we actually paid them, which is the $41,000.
Okay. So, you did allocate '54, but you didn't pay them '54.
Yeah. I'm going to stand up here real quick. Right here shows you your budget authority amount. Your budget authority amount was $55,000. Unencumbered cash was 13 through 41. And so, we missed a payment. And so, this money carries over to the next column, which would show up at the top.
What caused the payment to be missed? Was, are they supposed to invoice us? And maybe they didn't?
No. It was just missed. I mean, and that can happen because we have so many appropriations. But that's just an accounts payable that just was missed.
Okay. So, how are the payments going out? Is it auto-generated or is somebody keying it in?
Uh, it's usually, it's usually done during the quarter. So, like, or monthly. Depends on what the, who the group is. Now, it could be that, um, we didn't have the cash flow, but I think this was just, it was just missed.
Okay. But that, the question still wasn't answered. Who does that? Is it auto? So, it's auto-generated or is a human being does it?
Human being does it.
Human being. And where's that human being?
And accounts payable.
And where's accounts payable?
My office.
Okay. All right. So, it could have been as simple as somebody missed it?
Yeah. Yeah. It's on a spreadsheet, and as she does her payables, she just checks them off the list, and it was just missed.
Okay.
So, human error. So, in order to get that...
So, that would, that's what, where this adjustment is?
Yes, that's where the adjustment is. And no matter what, even if this was, even if this was allocated in '24, you would still be levying this full amount here for this year.
The '55.
Luckily, they called this week, and we didn't have to make this up for it in the general fund. Because what happens is if this carries over to here, then, and then there's $13,000 here because that's what would have happened. If I take this amount out, there'll be $13,000 here. It comes over here, and you levy less. And so, to make up this, we would have had to made it up in the general fund. So, now you're making it up in property tax levy.
So, but the number didn't change anyway?
No.
59.936.
Let's go to the general fund so you can see what's up in there.
All right. So, I'm just, I'm wanting to make sure that this, that we got last night is the...
Yes.
The budget that we all...
That we published?
Yeah.
Yes.
So...
It is, it is not the budget you published, but it is the same levy amount. Okay?
Okay. Well, we had to republish.
Why would that be the same, why would it not be the same budget that you published?
Because you moved, you moved, you made an adjustment from here to here. This was 30, you were levying $37,000 here, and now you're levying $50,000. And so, the adjustment came here.
All right. This is the one we published?
This is the one you published. Now, you don't have to make that change, but Tri Valley will probably come to the table and ask you to pay them for their allocation. One thing that could alleviate that a little bit, you don't have to have them in a fund of their own. They can be in the general fund. All those extra appropriations, like the health board, they can all be in the general fund. You can just say, have it as an appropriation line. So, in the future, that's something you can think about.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Any question? Any other further questions regarding this being our budget? Because if not, I want to start cutting on this budget.
Okay. Got your big red pen?
Uh, we weren't going to take questions, but go ahead.
I'm just looking at sensibility numbers here on the, this is not a tax number, but for the county jail and sales tax, why would we get less than the $1 million that we're showing in the emergency services tax when it's about 60% less? It's .25 sales tax, but the jail is .4.
Right.
But we showed less money collected.
No, 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 no. That's not collected. That's a budgeted number.
Okay. Well, why would we budget less than what? I mean, so you're making your payment comes out of that?
We're just basically budgeting for the payment. You can do...
You're basically budgeting for the payment?
Yes. If you need to expend more, you can do a budget amendment to expend more of the revenue that you receive in.
Got you. And this is just a flow-through on the million of the .25 because it flows right out?
Yeah.
Okay. Got it. Thank you.
Yeah. I mean, I could, I could put that as a higher number, but...
It doesn't make any sense to me.
It doesn't make any difference. Yeah.
I understand now.
Okay. So, are we required to levy the $55,000 amount? Was it not done by design when we adopted this budget to allocate the 37 instead of 55?
No. It runs off of cash reserves. So, your budget, your budget, how your budget works, the easiest, I don't know if I might be able to do this. This column right here, this is where it's so important that you understand. This is a cash reserve. This is what we brought over from the end of 2023, $194,000. These are all projections of revenues that we're going to bring in, this first column.
Is that page 31?
Yes.
Yes.
Page six, probably.
Or recapped on 31.
I'm on page six.
Okay. All right, I see it now.
So, this first column is your actuals from your audited financial statement, and that's for every single fund you have. The revenue, those are all actual revenue dollars that you have brought in, in '24. So, then you drop down to the next section, which is the second page of the general fund, which is probably 6A, maybe?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So, this is where you get into your expenses. This is what the expenses were for each one of these departments. Can you go down? And so, your unencumbered cash balance at the end of '24 was $381,929. That number carries to your next column.
I understand that. What I'm asking is, we're setting the budget. So, if they want to allocate $37,000 for 2026 to intellectual disabilities instead of 55, is that not the choice of the commission?
They requested $55,000.
I understand. A lot of people are not getting what they requested on this budget. That's what I'm trying to...
If you want to do that, you have that, you have that purview to reduce it down to the $37,000.
And that's what they did, right?
No, they didn't do that.
No, not, not that that's what our, that was one of the...
No, the BAC didn't understand that that didn't, that just came to light this week.
So, did the Fair Board then. So, we're, we're taking everything back that was taken down. Well, so...
No, we didn't take up the Fair Board, did we?
No, we didn't.
I mean, they came and spoke.
They came and asked for it.
Yeah, I mean, so...
Keep going. I don't want to interrupt your thought. I...
I'm sorry.
I would need to, I would caution you to read the statute on intellectual disabilities because I'm not very familiar with it. But there could be that you cannot, there are some statutes that you cannot levy less than the year you did before. So, that I would want to research. I can't answer that question right here at the table.
And that's what the Fair Board was bringing statutes to us. So...
And that was researched in the past by a previous county councilor, too. Somewhere in my notes, I have all that information.
And our BAC cut the Fair Board down from 10 to 5. And so, we might have to pop a lot of them that they cut back up.
All that's in that budget document that I, from last year. I put all the statutes that govern those appropriations.
So, how many of these, how many of these do you think that they're going to pop back up?
Uh, well, so far, the intellectual disabilities have come forward and the Fair Board, so...
That's two. How many others are there?
There were several.
Well, there's, uh, on here, you got mental health, which you took care of, intellectual disabilities, um, and then there's the health, the health board, and, um...
Elderly appropriations, conservation appropriation?
Conservation, yeah.
And that one, they had extensive conversations about the conservation.
The juvenile detention went up. It didn't go down.
Right. But I'm just saying, there are other, there are other...
They don't really give us a choice.
Then you got elderly...
That's a have-to-pay.
Pay what?
You got elderly appropriations, transfer...
Oh, okay. The reason I'm asking how many we got is if we're here, do the research.
Okay. Well, let's check those statutes.
Can you give me a statute, maybe?
I'm having trouble.
Intellectual disabilities?
Yeah, that's what it says here on page one. Where the K is? By the time I type it in, it brings up something from Saudi Arabia.
Yeah, I don't think that's right.
Could it be 107?
It's chapter 39.
39?
Whenever the county establishes a mental health center or facility for people with intellectual disability, shall establish, shall establish a community health mental Whenever the county establishes a mental health center or facility for people with intellectual disability, shall establish, shall establish a community health mental health governing board.
What cha, what article were you?
Nineteen four oh oh two.
Nineteen oh four, you said?
Four oh oh two.
Is it nineteen or thirty?
It's nineteen, I went back and.
Oh, you're not in chapter thirty nine, you're in chapter nineteen.
Yeah, they, they, that's where it sets the board. It's a non-uniformed, um, statute. In all counties, we ran the Board of Boarded Commissioners in the event of a combination of counties to stop at their governing board. May levy an annual tax upon the taxable change of property of which county for mental health services and to pay a portion of which one, just bonds. They may annual annual tax on tangible property to issue so general application bonds. There also might be an agreement. Jennifer, do you remember ever seeing an agreement?
I have the Tri Valley folder in there. If there is some sort of agreement for a certain mill, just like with the mental health. I believe we changed that by resolution, just wanted to put that information up there.
There was agreement in twenty four. Let's see one for twenty five, that doesn't mean it wasn't emailed. But the amount to be budgeted for is fifty five thousand dollars.
But what was the agreement in twenty four?
Fifty five.
That was in twenty four.
Right, I don't know what it is.
And we have nothing in twenty five, and who sends us the agreement?
Um, Bill Fiskus, he's the chief executive officer. I can try and check an email and see if maybe it's in the email.
Do you guys have the page with the statutes that the fair board gave you last night?
They, did they hand out something?
They did, she gave everybody a statute. Might have left my copy of that.
I haven't done that.
Okay. I already archived mine, probably.
All these trees are pome.
Oh, nope, I got mine, brought it. I'm gonna have to take it out of order here.
So it's just front, just, so I'm. Intellectual disabilities seems to be the only one that we really have to go back and figure out because there's a statute.
In the fair.
Huh?
In the fair.
In the fair, okay, but the fair, I don't see the fair on this list.
And the, the intellect, I think we just determined that the intellectual said may, and so we're looking for the contract, so.
Well, and it doesn't say how much. But, I mean, I'm. I would want to be, uh, I would want to know about where, you know, what what we're paying for, you know, when it comes to to Tri Valley and other off of that, out of that fund, because I would hate to.
I think I I.
Put them in a barn.
I think moving forward, while while Madam Clerk's looking this up, I think moving forward, we really need a continuity folder. What we call, what I call a continuity folder for the three of us and for all incoming commissioners and future commissioners, because, you know, this is a huge learning curve, I mean, I you got to do this job two or three years before you really get it down, but if you had a continuity folder where you know this is what you should look for as you're doing the budget, the statutes, and just for this to come out of left field when we're so close to the finish line, it just throws me off. Like, this information is not something that's new, this information has been around for decades, and for us to not know about it until the very end.
What?
The fact that you can't cut something because of a statute.
But we.
And then when, and the thing is, it's not just us, it went to the, the, the budget committee also. Because the budget committee did the cut, and then sometime this week, we found out that those cuts can't be made, that's what I just heard, am I hearing wrong?
I hadn't heard that, that we can't make the cut.
I always presented it whenever I've done the budget.
But I mean, I hadn't heard that we can't cut them.
Uh, no, there's statutes, there are some statutes that do not allow you to cut some, some programs. I don't have a budget document in front of me, I can go change by my twenty five one.
Well, I got the, I don't have any, but since the fair's on here, um.
And here, this is what she gave us last night for the fair, and let me grab the statute, David.
What is the statute? I'm gonna get to a new fresh page.
Section two.
Yeah, I saw, I mean, I saw that, what what their expenses are, you can have that back. We cut elderly appropriations by half.
And that's going to be another question, who are you funding, are you funding Bourbon County citizens, or are you funding everyone aging? The Bourbon County, the Board of Bourbon County Commissioners of any county may levy a tax, tax not to exceed a half a mill on all taxable tangible property within the county for the purpose of assisting in the provision of services for person, persons with physically handicapping conditions. The board shall adopt a resolution stating its intent to levy the tax and the purpose therefore. The resolution shall be published for once each week for two consecutive weeks in a newspaper of general circulation in the county, and I'm pretty sure that hasn't been done.
And that's, this is for what now?
This is for the mental disabilities.
Okay.
And it says for us to levy funds for them, we have to have a resolution, which we do not, so we could make one.
Yeah, and I'm not, I mean, I have to go back probably years, you've been funding them since, I mean, I've got a list here that goes back to nineteen ninety. And it started at forty two thousand back then, um, it was at fifty nine thousand in two thousand and eleven, and it dropped down to fifty five thousand in two thousand and fourteen. Now, if you want to know what they do, I have a list of services they provide, um, that they produce every time they see, all this information was produced to your budget advisory committee, and so that information probably in the future needs to get passed to you so that you can read. I mean, in the past, they would come and present to the commission so that you had a better understanding of what services they provide. But for example, they have, in Bourbon County, they had a hundred and nineteen day ha, um, daily residents. Um, their case management was two hundred and twenty five, they had seventy three people on their waiting list and a hundred and fifty one employees. So they employ a lot of people, I mean, for our area, we are one of the lowest paying besides Woodson County. Allen County pays seventy thousand, Bourbon County pays fifty five thousand, Neosho County pays fifty eight thousand, and Woodson County pays twenty three thousand. This is the report from last year.
Okay. I'm inclined not to mess with it this, this year, if we want to look at it in, at the statute and look at the, the, the breakdown and, and all that for next year, that's fine, but you know, we should have done that before jumping into this, you know, we, we picked the, uh, budget advisory committee, uh, for their expertise in this, and so I'm, you know, I'm not.
So you're gonna leave it at the, so you're supposed to leave it at the thirty seven?
At the fifty five.
The budget committee put it in as thirty seven.
I'm looking at today's budget.
This is the draft I got from the budget committee.
Yeah, and I have the same draft that we fixed.
Somebody's changed it in between now and then.
Yeah, we did.
So how are you going to?
Wait, wait, how do we change it from, from that draft to this draft, to this one?
I know, but none of us changed.
I did, I just explained that.
All right, hang on, hang on, hang on, so again, when we, the last time we looked at it was at a certain dollar amount, now, Madam Clerk went and changed it, okay? So this is part of my frustration, is that things that can change, if we need to change it, if things need to be changed, you need to change when all three of us, all four of us appear talking about it.
Yep.
Because when I look at budgets and I look at the numbers, and the numbers keep changing, it really is frustrating, because I don't know why. We talked about it at this table, and I understand why you did it now, but that still doesn't help the fact that it changed and I didn't know it, and these two over there are trying to figure it out.
But we, I had an opportunity last night to present it, and so that's what I was trying to do last night, was present why there was a change, it can always be changed back, that's what we were.
That's not, that's not my issue, ma'am, I apologize for, that's not my issue, my issue is, we're trying to keep it clean.
That is clean, in my opinion.
No, it is not clean.
It is.
It is not clean because we have too many fingers in the cake mix, that's the thing.
Okay, um, I'm a little, I'm still a little confused here, because the draft that I got, that was when we sat down with Mr. Smith and Mrs. Sin, and we all sat down and we went through this draft, and we were writing on it and stuff, I do not see in here where it changed from fifty five thousand to anything less.
They're talking about the levied funds, so there's a different amount that's being levied, sir. So let me change it back so you can see what it does to your budget. But they will come to the table and ask you for their allocation. That's what I'm trying to avoid.
That's for this year, though, we're trying to budget for twenty six, they're gonna come ask for their allocation for this year, is that right?
They're gonna ask for their allocation from twenty four.
For twenty four, okay, but we're, we're not talking about twenty four, we're talking about twenty six.
But twenty four affects twenty six. Because you used the thirteen thousand dollars that was supposed to go to them in the twenty five budget to make their levy lower. Normally, their levy is, um, higher, I'm gonna take the thirteen thousand dollars out, normally, their level levy is point three seven eight, that's, that's always what it is. But the budget that was presented was point two six eight.
I have a relevant logical question, I believe. If we didn't give it to them in twenty twenty four, and they didn't notice it until now, how bad did they need it?
They're not here to answer that question, I'm not answering it.
Did we, did we receive any notification from the, okay, we're in September right now.
I received an email this week.
This week?
And I want, this is, I'm trying to fix a mistake that was made in twenty four. And human error happens. But just by making that one change. You're down to fifty nine point eight four oh.
Well, we're here to talk, that's the thing, I want to continue to talk, I want to continue to explore.
And I would like to continue to talk too, but I really don't want to be accused of doing things that I.
I, and I'm not accusing you, you admitted, you admitted to changing the number, and bless you for doing what you think is best, but my point is the three people in the hot seat are sitting right here, when the budget finally gets finalized and it goes to the people, and whether, they're not coming in here, we're facing a bunch of, we are responsible for, and because we are responsible for it, we need to know every move that happens on that, on that budget, every move. I did not know this moved until just now, I understand you said you want to present it yesterday, that's great, but yesterday was not a good day, it was a long meeting, there was so much.
And this is the only time I've had to present it now with the three of you.
I understand that. You could, you could have sent us an email and said, hey, this is what I'm going to do, there's plenty, there's many ways to communicate with the commissioners, other than sitting here at the table. And, 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 and we've had many, many people working on this budget, and I came in here with the expectation of like looking at a semi-finished product, and what I'm seeing right now is that we're not, we're far from being finished. So I, I want to continue to work with everybody and talk to people and work this through, I need to see the final product, we owe the people that much.
I agree, and do you know how many budgets I've put together?
I, yeah, that's why.
Seven.
And, your point, ma'am?
I put together seven different budgets for seven different people, and so there are things that get lost in translation.
Right, that's, and I understand that, that's what I'm saying, there's too many, between what you're doing, between what we're doing, between what the, the BAC's, there's a lot of cake mix.
Right.
Let's just get down to one, one bowl, and let's just figure this out.
So then I need to, I need to let everybody know that the one that was presented by the BAC was presented incorrectly too, because they did not take into consideration the neighborhood revitalization program. That's why you have one person preparing the budget document for you. And I wasn't able to address that until this meeting. So every time we make a change to this document, the neighborhood revitalization program has to be changed in tandem. Every change you make changes those dollars.
Okay, so I, I go back here again, because I said, you know, we started out on this, and I said, this paper that we got last night, was this the pa, is this the paper that we're going off of tonight, and then all of a sudden, here we are with this draft again. So either we're gonna go with this one, or we're gonna go with this one, but.
I don't know what that draft is.
That's the.
That's the one we worked on while you were in the commission.
Yeah, and that's the one I presented to you before this came up this week. So the one I presented last night with the only change.
Which is the published one that's in the paper.
No, the one that's in the paper is the published one there.
Right.
The only change to this document was the thirteen thousand dollars that I felt was correct for the, for the Tri Valley.
For Tri Valley.
Yes. So you were the one.
And we went from, we went from five nine point three six, or five nine point nine three six to five nine point eight oh four, right? Is that what you said?
Eight four oh.
Eight four oh.
But I still need to go in and change an RPA, may I do that?
Hold on. I don't think so, I mean, that's just my opinion, I, it's been done, it's been changed, we're talking about less than not even one mill. We're talking about less than, not even one mill or, you know, bringing it back up. So, I mean, thirteen thousand, it corrects a mistake. I'm not so sure, I wanted to cut Tri-Valley anyway. So I mean, until, you know, I was here last year when they come in, made presentation to the previous board. And 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 other ones, you know, like the Fair Board Conservation, all of them come in and they all got valid points. Uh, there are some that, you know, that it would make sense, but we didn't do it that way this year. So the way we did it is what we should should take and that's what what they recommended. But that was before we found out that there was additional money. I'm I'm just saying, it, to me, it's not worth fighting over for that, for that low amount that that we're dealing with. There's, there's bigger cuts that we can make that that if we were wanting to make cuts, that's gonna lower the mill. So I I I don't want to get into working on that rather than sitting here.
On one item.
On one item.
May I?
Yes.
So we don't want to squabble over the thirteen thousand. But again, we cut programs like the Fair Association that only ever asked for ten just to stay afloat, cut them down to five. They tried to pinch every single penny there was to pinch, okay? And then the um, the, is it the? I'll find it, just give me a moment.
Okay.
While we're waiting for that, could you, could you pull up the budget, the last budget where we were at fifty-seven point five five zero, please?
It's on the first page. Can you tell me what budget that was?
I don't know.
We've never been on any of the.
Not us, but that's the last budget was revenue neut, that's the rate.
No, last year was fifty-nine for them to.
So when was the last time we were at fifty-seven point five five zero?
The Conservation District.
So where did that number come from?
About half also.
Revenue neutral doesn't come off of a.
Doesn't come off of that. Revenue neutral comes off of it, it's a number that is calculated within our tax system that says this amount, based on your assessed valuation, will raise the same exact tax dollars that you raised the year before. That's a number that's created based on your assessed valuation. When your assessed valuations go up, then it says, okay, fifty-seven point seven is what's gonna raise the exact same amount of tax dollars. So there's not a budget that's been created based on that.
Okay.
On your draft there, show me where on the intellectual disabilities that it's different this year. I mean, I'm showing fifty-five on my, my sheet that I looked up.
That's, that's tax levy. He's looking at budget, you're looking at tax levy. And and it was thirty-seven one thirty-two. So what I found it was the Conservation District. We cut them down to twenty-five thousand and I told them, what are you gonna do? You know, how are you gonna stay afloat? And they said they'll, they'll have to sell some assets. And so it's hurting everybody. Everybody's feeling the pain. Some are just figuring it out. And some were feeling obligated to figure it out for them.
All right, so let me ask you this next question. It's almost six o'clock. How late are you willing to stay tonight? I'm serious. How late are both of you willing to stay tonight? Because I'll stay here all night long if we have to fix this. I need, I need to get, I want to fix this. I want to get this thing done. Now, we can't, I mean, you're the chair.
No, I can't tell you what, we're a collective body.
I understand that, I understand that. But we're, we're the ones who elected you the leader. We nominated you, we voted you in as a leader. You are a leader and I'm not gonna vote somebody to be a leader, not follow them. So I'm just telling you what I would like to see.
What I, you know, we sat here in a, in a special meeting just like this with, and went through this exact one. And the only changes to it has been that one deal. So all the other stuff was was still changed back then. The Fair Board, all that stuff was changed, was still under the numbers that we're, we're saying now, tonight, that we want to change because of this one here.
I I actually, they actually called and spoke up and that's why they were at the meeting yesterday. And so that's why I'm bringing it up. Not because, I didn't even know about the intellectual one, I, this was coming anyway, so.
All right, let's move forward, so do we?
So do you want to add them back up to ten thousand?
I think a five thousand dollar contribution goes a long ways to the Fair Board. And she did bring statute that said shall last night, so. I think if we're diving deep to make sure we shut it or cut and build back down. Then um we should dive deep into each one of them to make sure we're not doing it against statute.
We owe to, we owe to the people to do our best.
Okay, so let's start.
Okay.
Which one do you want to start with? I mean, we're gonna look at statutes? Or are we gonna look at changing the price back to their original price?
Well, we need to make sure that we, let's look at statutes because I think at the very least, we need to follow the law.
Okay, so we. Which one do you want to look at first?
Did we ever find anything on intellectual, I mean, or?
That was a may.
I'm sorry?
On on that statute for intellectual disabilities, you may levy a tax.
Okay, so.
I don't know. Yeah.
So going into, well, let's talk about that next time. It's like, do we want to levy something for next year?
I think we should levy something, I don't know that it has to be the same.
For intellectual.
Like I said, they, they didn't notice thirteen thousand dollars not there from twenty twenty-four for a full year.
Their fiscal year, I don't know when their fiscal year runs, it may run through June and they're just now doing their audit. And it was pointed out, I don't know, I didn't get context behind it.
Let's see, you know, the Fair Board came forward.
With a shell statute?
Yeah. So what was the statute? Cause it said shell.
Shall.
Shall.
Can, can you bring their statute up?
I don't know it.
I don't see one on here.
She brought it yesterday evening.
Yeah, but I mean, on on here where there's other statutes for other funds, I don't see anything for fairs.
So under, under Article One State, I may have it right, I don't know, let's see. Chapter two, Article One State and other agricultural societies and fairs, county's aid when, county aid when amount purpose. When a governing body of any city which levies a tax pursuant to subsection so-and-so. And amendment heretofore, the purpose of maintaining a county free fair, the Board of County Commissioners of the county of which the city is located, shall appropriate from the general fund of the county an amount of money which shall not exceed five thousand dollars. The Board of County Commissioners shall cause a warrant to be issued in favor of the treasurer of the County Free Fair Board in the amount paid by the county. This amount, together with the amount raised by the city, shall be used for the purpose of defraying all the expenses and maintenance of the County Free Fair and to pay awards and premiums for exhibitions at the fair.
So.
That's what it says.
Yeah. So we're, we're within the statute.
Unless I'm reading the wrong statute, which, hey, I'm a human being.
She was reading from KSA two dash one twenty-nine last night.
You said two, two dash one twenty-nine?
Yes.
Thank you, Jennifer. Okay, county aid, amount of tax levy dues. Okay, in a county, in a county with, wow, these prints are small, goodness gracious. In a county having a population more than a hundred and twenty-five thousand, twenty-five thousand, and assessed tangible valuation of more than one hundred and fifty million dollars, the Board of County Commissioners may give official recognition to both the County Fair Association, livestock shows, but I gotta get down to the era.
A sum equal to the actual cost of providing and paying for the premiums and rewards actually awarded at its annual fair for the current year, including but not limited to the actual cost of the printing of the premiums list and the amount to pay judges of the fair exhibits for the current year.
And that's why she brought this expenditures report to prove what she needed, to go with her statute.
Read the first sentence again. In a county with a hundred and twenty-five thousand people.
That's right.
Lower evaluation. Stuff right there.
In counties having a population of not less than seventeen-five, nor more than twenty-two thousand, which have assessed tangible valuation of no less than thirty-one million dollars, nor more than forty-seven million dollars, and now joining another state, that county may pay additional funds which may be used for the purchase of grounds and wrecking maintenance, wrecking and maintenance of buildings to be used for such fair. In Leavenworth County and counties having a population of not less than thirty-four thousand and no more than fifty, having an assessed taxable tangible valuation of more than six hundred, sixty million, the county, in addition, may pay to another fair in such county if such fair has been established and operational for more than ten years, a sum for the purpose of providing and paying for the premiums and rewards actually awarded at its annual fair for the current year, including but not limited to the actual cost of the printing of the premium list, the amount to be paid, to, the amount to be paid judges of the fair exhibited for the current year. The Board of County Commissioners may make an annual tax levy upon which all tax, assessed taxable tangible valuation of such county to raise the funds for the purpose of herein before authorized and to pay a portion of the principal and interest on bonds issued under the authority of KSA twelve dash one seven seven four.
All right, there's something that says we have fifteen thousand or less, does it?
No.
Can I see their expense sheet?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
So.
So are we sure on that one?
Expenditures prior to June thirtieth nineteen sixty-five confirmed.
They have a sheet reading saying that they're only asking for ten, but at the top it says where you shall pay the, what their premiums are and this, which would exceed the ten thousand, but they're only asking for ten.
Okay, so if you look at um two dash one two nine A expenditures prior to June thirtieth nineteen sixty-five confirmed, if prior to the effective date of this act, a fair association has used monies received from a county pursuant to the provisions of KSA two dash one two nine, has used such funds in part for actual cost of printing of premiums list and or for compensation paid to judges of exhibits. The expenditure of funds for such purposes hereby declared to be a valid expenditure and confirmed the same as though such payments were made subsequent to effective date of this act. So I mean, that, what I'm just looking at is what they had on their expense sheet. They have a lot where they pay judges and.
Yeah, they have forty-nine thousand. I think she said their insurance is just for the fair, six, over seven, over six thousand dollars.
Do we own the fair ground?
Fair Board does.
Fair Board does.
I think it sounds, sounds like because of our population, this one would be a minimum of five. Yeah, and, and unless we choose to do more and we establish the intellectual disabilities is a may. And so whatever we choose there too. So right now it's coming down to resting on our shoulders whether we're gonna give them operating funds or not. What other ones do we have? We have. Mental health, we already cut that one out. Which, what does mental health statute say? I know we went over that when we did it, but.
It said may.
May.
That's where we have the levy, yeah.
Okay.
So they went from ten to five, they're asking for ten.
That's what they did last, that's what they came to the podium last night and presented during our budget hearing.
Yeah, here's, here's my take on it, guys. This is an agricultural community, okay? We've been sitting around talking about ag, 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 and I'm all for, I, I, I have no issues with it. And the fair, to me, has always been, since I was a kid, the place you just go and hang out. But as as adult, I also see now that the fair is where our kids grow. Make sense? And I'm inclined to just give them the money that they ask. Because in the end, it's helping out the kids. And then we'll have to try to figure out where else to cut. So I, do I do a motion on this or we just talk about it?
We talk about it.
Okay. So I say just give them the five Gs, the extra five Gs, bring it back up to what they had.
I'm good with it.
We did this exercise several years ago. Same exercise. Emergency preparedness, does not require a full-time employee, could be interjurisdictional, but it has a shall statute. Coroner has a shall statute. Juvenile tension, tension is optional, pay per use and not place to detain, however, we had a contract. Health board is a shall, elderly is a shall, must fund at the same level as two thousand and one. So I don't know that we can cut that one.
Who's that?
Have to go back and look and see what we funded them in two thousand and one.
Who's that?
That is your.
Elderly.
Elderly. Fair Board, ten thousand, optional. And it says Justin is researching. Conservation District was optional, not to exceed two mills or fifty-five thousand, whichever is less, state will match up to twenty-five thousand. Mental health, optional unless there is an agreement. Intellectual disabilities, optional unless there is an agreement.
Copy of that, Susan? We all have a copy of that.
This, yeah, I want to start a continuity, I want to start a counting folder.
I think it's a great idea, Sam.
Thank you, Susan, thank you very much.
Great idea.
So we all agree, we're gonna, with the fair, we're gonna up, up their, their stock, all right?
I am, I don't, I've got your consensus.
All right, so we're good?
Yeah, I need.
Hey, that's a win, let's go on to the next one.
That was a win.
It's a win, let's go, we keep going.
Yeah, let's, don't keep beating on it.
We keep this momentum going, okay?
Are any of the others like this case that you go to watch them, right?
We're gonna leave the intellectual disabilities at alone.
Same type of thing. Yeah.
The intellectual disability, remind me, how much is that?
Fifty-five thousand.
A little more in depth.
Well.
And with that saying, your elderly was funded in twenty twenty-one at forty-eight six.
Where we at now?
And they were cut in half.
Yeah.
Oh, goodness.
And that was a statute?
Yes, that's the one you, elderly is shall.
Optional. No, I guess it's shell.
It's shell.
Okay.
And it capped us at the, at the low of what twenty twenty-one was, or twenty.
Two thousand and one. So what'd you say in two thousand and one it was?
It says right over there to the right.
Okay, so it was forty-eight six.
Yep.
So in two, twenty twenty-three budget, it stayed that way, so. And do we cut that?
Well, that says twenty twenty-three, the forty-eight six, it don't say what twenty, two thousand and one was.
Twenty twenty-one was.
Twenty-two thousand and one was forty-eight-six.
Yeah.
Is what the...
But it says here must fund is the same as two thousand and one.
Yeah, and we went back, we went way back, I know, and looked at it.
Well, that's not right.
So we have to put it back to forty-eight-six from the twenty-four-three.
No, that's, I have another question on that because you look at, you look at the graph all the way on the right, it went forty-eight-six from two thousand and twenty-three all the way to two thousand and twenty-seven, and then in two thousand and twenty-six, I'm sorry, two thousand and sixteen, apologies, in two thousand and sixteen it was at forty-seven-six. So what is it in two thousand and fifteen, fourteen, and so forth?
I couldn't tell you because I don't have data that far back. That's why they chose to stay with where it was at.
Okay, so we're using that number as a benchmark?
Yes.
Alright, that's, when we put that as...
So I have to change that to forty-eight-six?
So we're gonna use forty-eight-six as a benchmark, correct?
Mm-hmm.
We all agree on that?
Um, just a second.
From a historical perspective, they have always come in and said that years ago, and I, we never, Jennifer and I could never find in any of the election stuff, that there was an election that was, um, done saying that they would get one, one mil or a half a mil. But we never could find anything on that, so that's kind of just been a...
We go with this. Cause there was nothing certified in any minutes, any resolutions, there was nothing in the election records.
I, I think when this all, when all this is done, you have one, two, three, four, you have four shals, which means we have to fund it. And after this is done and we have the budget going, in, in two thousand and twenty-six, one of the first things we should do is, um, come up with resolutions to get it out of tax. Because then this would never be an issue moving forward.
I don't think, I think if it's a shall on a statute, we don't have the option. I think if it's a may on the statute, that's where we made the resolutions.
Right.
And then we were able to peel those back. But the ones that are shall, that somebody else made the decision for us to fund it, and it's not really our choice anymore.
Right, that's what I'm saying, so that's when you go and get, you do the mil levy, and it's always funded.
Oh, okay.
It's, it's always going to be funded, so we, future commissioners...
But if it goes up, then it goes up. I mean, if the mil, if the mil goes, if the valuations go up, then they would get more money automatically. So I wouldn't necessarily want to do that because if we're only required to do forty-eight-six, we wouldn't necessarily want them to go up past that.
So here's what the statute says, on and after the effective date of this act, each local unit of government that provided matching funds directly to an area on aging for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, two thousand and one, shall continue to provide matching funds to the area aging, agency on aging at the funding level provided directly to the area on aging for match for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, two thousand and one. So with there not being any data, um, the only thing I could do is maybe go to the basement and try and find a two thousand and one audit and financial.
I, I hear what you're saying, Commissioner Loeber, but I'm, I'm, to me, it's like, if you set up a, if you set up a levy on it, and let's say it goes up to fifty-eight-six, it goes up to fifty-eight-six because inflation is always gonna grow, and you can't keep paying, I'm just spitballing here, so if I'm wrong, you tell me. But you're paying this num, the same fun, the same amount since two thousand and seventeen. Okay, and we're in two thousand and twenty-five.
Yeah, we've been...
So that forty, forty-eight thousand, six hundred doesn't go very far for these people.
We've been doing that to a lot of the budgets here for years, I think.
Yeah, I understand that. And people, and here's the crazy part, this is the part where I'm trying to square it up, so try not to raise taxes. But how, how do we do that and then make this money stretch? Cause we don't control this budget once, once it goes to that, make sense? They have to use that money to do what they need to do.
So we grow or cut services if we don't want to raise taxes?
But we can't cut services, can't cut this service. In, in twenty years from now.
Yeah.
In twenty years from now, you and I may be in this home, okay? And that forty-eight-six is gonna come back and bite us.
You know, I know. When I sat here when they did this the first time, I was in here and I said, "Do we're gonna take that money?" And they said, "Well, our reasoning is this," and, you know, "Other people will fundraise and do this." I see that, um, but they didn't see the shall, so we're putting it back on. But, but my, what I'm, I'm just cautioning to the mil.
Okay, I mean, we're talking, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Alright. So we agree that's gonna be forty-eight-six, Chair?
Sure.
I wrote it down.
I'm still trying to find, I'm, I'm looking here through some stuff.
This thing's creeping right back up.
That is win two.
And, uh, wow.
That's a winning streak.
Yeah, we're starting...
We'll see if it's a win when we get to the end, and we have, have a mil.
You know, cause it's creeping back up.
Did you, did you need to add that or do anything?
I just wrote it on here.
Okay, alright. So that one's up to, what's the next one we're gonna tackle?
Health board, I think, got, uh, stayed the same, maybe.
Health board stayed the same.
Ninety-seven fifty, yes, it stayed the same, so it's okay.
They had asked for ninety-two, I think, in their presentation, but...
Next?
Um, the health board didn't stay the same, we had moved it back that day to ninety-seven fifty.
To the last year.
Rather than the proposed ninety-two, yeah, we moved it back to the last year, which would be ninety-seven fifty. Right, that's, that's what's in this document.
Okay. Um, the coroner, there's been talks in the past to try and work with other counties because it's become more, and it's, it's increased in expenses significant over the last two or three years. So that might be something that a commissioner might want to take on, talking with other counties to see how maybe you can, could form a consortium. Yeah, um, well, you look in twenty-four, the expenses were seventy-three thousand.
Mm-hmm.
So it's, it's all over the place.
Well, then it's a shall.
Mm-hmm, it is a shall. But if you don't budget enough for it, then you're gonna cut into your cash reserves, so...
So what, what was it last year?
Thirty-five thousand, and I know we're already past that for twenty-five.
Where are we at this year?
For coroner services, we're already over that.
Already over that.
So you're the next AL, the coroner does, I mean, I know what a coroner does, but when do you call a coroner out? Each and every death?
That's up to the sheriff or the city law enforcement.
So it's just not, you don't call them out just when there's an accident or when you think...
Any unattended death is, uh...
Is it, is it...
Has to have a coroner.
Okay, alright, that makes sense.
It used to be the sheriff was the coroner. We used to have deputy coroners back in the day. Because we didn't, yeah, the coroners, you know, all retired, so...
You think you could talk to the sheriff, take down that responsibility again?
Sure, I'd do it.
Save, save just thirty-five grand.
I'd do it for thirty-five.
I don't have access to the internet, so...
Alright, still working, did you reboot?
I just, I don't have password. I don't have access to the internet.
You know the password to the internet?
I don't think I can get to my password.
What's the password to your computer?
I don't have access to the computer, but I'm not connected to the internet.
I thought you just log in with your password.
Yeah, that's all you do, is you log in with your password.
That's what we do, we just log in.
When you go into that, you just put in your password.
I, I haven't been working. Cause you have to jump on a network, and the network isn't AV, zero, eighty.
It's the one I logged on.
Me too.
Cause you, yeah.
Yeah, cause your computer's on our network, so it's...
Yeah, you just hit...
This computer's not hooked into the network.
Ah, it's a different computer.
It's on Wi-Fi.
Oh, yeah, that don't work. That's a no-no.
No, mine's not hooked into the network.
Did somebody log you in at some point?
Yes, yes, you guys are on it.
Um, you can call him, he's open twenty-four-seven.
He was for the coroner.
Sorry, sorry. Oh, no, you're good, you're good.
He's open twenty-four-seven.
He is, because I, I talked, I talked to Jason and...
What's next? So we got elderly appropriations, the fair, the health board appropriations, um... So the fair's going up to ten?
Yes.
Juvenile detention, I don't think that we can do anything to that.
No, we're stuck.
Got a shadow mark on that one.
We're stuck.
Um, dispatch, we know is two hundred and forty thousand, cause that's the agreement we made with the city when they so finally decided to keep it, um, for our share. So that one's good, at two hundred and forty. IT, we shaved fifty thousand dollars off that budget, so it's at two hundred and fifty. So that don't have to go back up. Emergency preparedness, now, uh... You, that one on the statute said that we could share some services, was that right? Is that what I heard? So it could be interjurisdictional.
We're getting ready to replace...
Are you gonna do that? I mean, that might be, I mean, you might have it if we could do a savings.
Well, I can't make that decision tonight. We cannot make that decision.
Oh, right, okay.
I mean, we don't, we won't know until we start looking into replacing him, whether or not we wanna do shared with another county.
Yeah, I'm just saying that's a cost-saving opportunity.
Yeah.
Hi, I'm just trying to access the...
So, I mean, it might be something I can do tomorrow. Talk to a couple counties tomorrow.
Yeah, that's true, you, you don't do that? Okay.
No, I'm, I'm on Wi-Fi.
Are you gonna take back crock and all them, they're yours? Somebody is.
No, actually, um...
It doesn't give me a password, I have to put a password.
I managed all of that for us.
Huh?
The managed services, we don't have to do anything with any of them.
No, I don't have any passwords, we're on network, so we're good.
The administration deal on that?
Mm-hmm, yeah, they did it all, yeah, they're, they're doing it all, even the...
So my, my draft doesn't even show the same as what you're reading there, like on dispatch?
Well, so I still, you don't have the, you have the old draft?
I have the original draft.
You do, yeah, mine does, I still got one.
Okay, so where we at?
I mean, it don't matter, I was working off of this sheet anyway.
Yeah. Um, we made it to emergency preparedness, or, I mean, I'm just kinda over here going over there. Um, do you wanna leave it at the sixty-four, no, uh...
On who?
The emergency preparedness, do we wanna leave it at sixty-four? Um, I mean, we're not finalizing this tonight, so, so really, that one, we can just put a question mark on it, just kinda leave it at where the VAC put it and put a question mark on it because if you do come up with an agreement, uh, or discussion, we could, we could...
Oh, can bring it back, yeah.
Yeah. Right?
Right.
Yeah. Okay, and then District Court, um, they, we actually increased theirs from three thirty-nine, six ninety to three forty-nine, six fifty. Um, and so, I don't know anything about that one. I think Susan brought their request, I mean, she brought all those requests, she has them all over there, what the, what the budget committee was presenting, so we can actually look at it ourselves. See if there's anything that, um, see if it was all for contractual or if it was, um, for other reasons that they raised. We can skip that one.
Well, I'm saying like courthouse general and district court, I mean, they... I wouldn't mess with them. I mean, they, this is what the budget committee worked out with those, those two departments. They're departments, they're not...
What are you thinking you might shave? Alls we've done is add stuff.
Well, the thing is, we need, okay, we can, we need to go back and add the stuff that we have to add.
Yeah.
Okay? And once we add the stuff we have to add, then you can go back and look at the whole thing until it's all tall and it starts shaving.
Okay.
But we don't shave the stuff that's required by law.
Yeah, and that's just the stuff right here on this sheet, right?
Yes, all the shit. But I guess we did some that work.
No, that's fine. They have to escalate it, it's not worth it. I'm going to the office if I need to run a report. Um, what were you asking about? Um, county attorney?
Uh, district court. It went up.
Not much.
No.
Ten thousand. Probably for their court reporter, that's usually what it's for. Part of it was in wages, three thousand dollars in wages. Thousand dollars in transcripts.
The wages are for the security personnel.
Yep, three thousand is for juvenile, GAL. So that would be for their court-appointed attorneys.
Juvenile intake.
So there's a built-in raise, or? No, it's just they have that much going on.
Well, you said wages.
Oh, wages, no, they are, capers changed, used to be you could only work, um, up to twenty thousand dollars before it rolled over into, cause they're both retired employees. And to, uh, after twenty thousand dollars, you would have to pay a thirty-nine percent. That changed this last year, they can now be paid up to forty-five thousand dollars without it getting to thirty-nine percent, which is good for us, cause we have several people that work for us that are retired, and we have to monitor their hours. And so this is probably putting him more in line with the other employee. So maybe it is a raise, it could be just that they're trying to fill their forty-hour work week, cause I know that, I think they've been working thirty-five hours. Do you remember any more, Joe, what they came and said?
The judge explained that their security personnel have not had a raise for, I forget how many years.
Yeah.
So so far, we've only done two, right? Fair...
Oh, so the ones that were shall, we did elderly appropriations and we did health board appropriations.
We left health board alone, right?
Yep.
Ninety...
Yep, in the el, yeah, because those were the two shall.
Well, it was just, yeah, it was dropped to the same as last year.
So health board and elderly.
Did we decide on coroner? That was the last time we talked about.
No, we were still... I have to go in and print a report, so I can do that. One thing, while you're talking about ju, the, um, emergency management, if there's not a replacement soon, there's a report that's due, we're gonna lose twenty thousand dollars in funding, which goes into the general fund, so you'll be short that amount.
On emergency preparedness?
Uh-huh, it's due within the next month.
What do you put it up?
So we have a person right now, can they not do the report?
It's the grant that we get to cover his wages.
Wait, wait, it's a grant?
He's leaving Friday.
It's a grant that is required to be filled out for emergency preparedness, um, so that you can get reimbursed for his wages.
And who fills out that grant, huh?
He does.
He does?
Mm-hmm.
Well, then he needs to, I'll talk to him tomorrow.
So on EP, we're gonna keep it at what point, what dollar amount you said? Emergency preparedness.
We're gonna, I'm gonna look into seeing if we can't do shared costs with another county.
Okay.
That'd be nice if you could use the twenty thousand grant and just pay that to the other county.
I don't know if they're gonna wanna go, I mean, if ours is sixty-four, theirs is probably pretty close.
Well, then we wouldn't have the overhead and the, and the travellings and the, all that, and it would just be twenty thousand off their budget, and it would, and they would just grab another county.
If you do a share with emergency preparedness, what happens if we have, let's just, for the sake of conversation, we share with Lincoln County, and we have an emerg, we have a, a...
The same emergency?
Yeah, where does that person go?
I imagine they'd monitor the whole site, and from what I understood, when they had the emergency over here and with the tornado, all of the EM people just flocked over there anyhow to help. And so did the fire and anybody that could.
I'm just gonna look into options.
I'm not busting your, you know what, I'm just, I'm just asking.
Yeah.
What's in the flask?
Oh, water.
Just kidding.
Anything else, I will not be clear.
We'd ask you to share.
That's a win.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Are we done with the sh, oh, we're still waiting on corner, right?
Yeah, but we can bounce over to the next, well, no, because we have emergency in corner that we've, weren't sure either one of those, and so the emergency, we're kind of waiting on that one, right?
I got a star beside it, so we got, health board, we're good, juvenile detention, we're stuck.
So, we budgeted fifty for corner this year, but it was thirty-five last year, and I almost wonder if that's because they're thinking, um, we're gonna exceed budget this year or something, I don't know. Whoa, it went from seventy-three, um, from twenty twenty-four, thirty-five.
She says it's all, yeah, she said it's all over the board.
Oh, that's crazy.
You guys want to go out and get us a burger or something? I thought you were, I thought you were gonna take care of it. I know.
I'd be happy to get you pizza and papadons.
No, I'm, I'm good, I'm good, thank you.
Nice of you.
I'm, I'm still salty about not getting an ice cream yesterday.
I know you are.
Where did that come from? There were no.
Papadons.
A box, okay.
I didn't know papadons had ice cream.
Okay, I was like, they came out.
Oh, yeah, they got, they got black walnut ice cream.
Well, yeah, I didn't know you could get that anywhere, actually, and I didn't recognize the box or the cup or.
There's a right place, right time, kind of thing.
It was.
Time for a story. Okay, I went over there one night to get some ice cream, and one of the young men who waits there is a friend of our grandson, has been out to our place, and so he's with jet skiing along with us, he said, you came for your ice cream, and I said, yes, it was Monday night.
Oh.
And I said, yes, and he said, okay, so he dips it up, well, I didn't have a five-dollar bill, I had picked up a one-dollar bill out of my pocket, and I said, oh, I gotta get back to the car, and a woman in the face said, no, I'll pay for it for you, and so she paid for it. But I went out to the car to get my five dollars, the young man meets me at the door and said, she's already paid for it, and I said, oh my gosh, and I said, I'm getting ready to go to the county commission meeting, and the woman said, you need this fortification.
That's so funny.
Twenty-eight thousand to per of corner.
It felt the pain.
That's just through July.
That's true, okay, so we haven't been billed for August or September?
Well, if you spend what you spent, you'll, you'll be looking at that fifty thousand that's budgeted.
The problem is, is in twenty.
They budgeted thirty-five thousand, I seen that.
Yep. So if it, I mean, we're not gonna have enough for, you really probably ought to go ahead and change that number in twenty-five to be fifty also, to get a more accurate cash balance carrying over.
On what?
On corner.
Right, right now, if we, if we spent twenty-eight, thirty-five up to July, projection is gonna be another twenty.
So we.
You're right.
So how do we?
Another twenty thousand by the end of the month, by the end of the year, so you're looking at roughly twenty thousand dollars.
Where do we, where do we find our corner? Where does they come out of?
Kansas City, I don't know that we have a whole lot of.
Corners are us.
Forensic medical is what they're called.
Says the responsibility. It is. In Kansas, the coroner system involves the appointment of district coroners by the county commissioners. Uh, district coroners, they are responsible for investigating deaths that occur under unusual or suspicious circumstances, such as those resulting from violence or unlawful means. Qualifications, got to be a med, it's practice medicine, surgery, deputy coroners, in some counties, deputy, deputy coroners may be appointed to assist the district coroner in their duties. Kansas coroner medical examiner's law. So there might be something, we can look into some of this, but.
To save?
Yeah. Not gonna happen right now.
But if you don't change that twenty-five number to fifty?
Thirty-five, isn't it?
I thought we were already at fifty.
If you don't change that in twenty-five, then you'll, you'll, you'll feel it in twenty-six if you don't do it now in twenty-five, so you can kind of see where your numbers are gonna land.
My worry is that.
We need to up.
We're using reserves in the twenty-sixth budget, from what I could gather from the VAC meetings, we pulled reserves out of the benefits to put towards the budget, that's kind of scary.
Where do we got fifteen to add?
You know.
Say what?
So then we just wait. On the corner.
But it's better for you to see how it's gonna affect you in twenty.
Because we're spending those reserves in twenty-six.
Well, we'll keep the twenty-twenty-six what we're gonna budget next year.
Yeah, but I think you still need to do it in twenty-five, because if you.
But we don't have the money.
Well, but it's just, it's cutting into your reserves, so it helps you make decisions, hey, can you, can you add to a budget when you really can't, you need to take away that.
Right now, we're projecting that we're going to spend fifty thousand dollars this year, they only budgeted thirty-five, so it looks like we have more money than we're probably going to have at the end of the year, and I'd rather find out now than at the end of the year, especially if we're intending to use these reserves for next year, which I think we're very well aware that we are intending to use these reserves for next year unless we intend to levy. And I, I do think that our we, I would love to have revenue neutral, but we got that extra two hundred thousand dollars that we're absorbing for nine-one-one, so there's, unless we take two thou, two hundred thousand dollars from somebody, there's no way that we can.
I don't think we were even looking to go to.
I mean, I was kind of looking.
I was looking just to stay in this fifty-nine range, down from sixty-two.
And I think we're doing pretty good doing that, knowing that we're adding two hundred thousand in nine-one-one, that's a huge deal.
Let me have a sidebar with Madam Clark real quick. So on these, these four budgets that we're talking, I'm trying to figure out how on this budget right here, there's cash reserve of four hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars. And then on this budget right here, the published budget, we only have a cash reserve of one twenty-two. And this one here, the one I, the last one I asked for was three fifty-eight, so where does all this money come, because these are projected, correct?
These are as a result of what's put in here, so, for example, here.
All right, that bump, I got that, yeah.
Um, these are fine, they're fine. It's fine, it's fine. Here, to here.
Yeah, that's forty grand increase.
Mm-hmm.
That's for dispatch.
That's a two, that's a hundred ninety thousand dollar increase.
Nothing else did now, um.
So, but again, this is both, okay, so what, what, just, this is the document I gave you guys yesterday, which is, well, we're looking at Sam's proposal, eight twenty-five twenty-five versus Sam's new proposal, nine fifteen twenty-five. So the numbers of the cash reserve on the initial one was four hundred and ninety-four thousand, the new one comes out to three hundred and fifty-eight thousand, that money is, there's a deficit in there because there's certain things, the, the commissioner's budget went up, the financing went up, um, the, the, we, another forty grand went up for dispatch, however.
No, it wasn't forty, it was a hundred and ninety.
No, no, it went from two hundred for dispatch to two forty.
Oh.
From what he had proposed.
Right, so the published budget has two forty, so that's, that's, we're still, I'm looking at the numbers across, and I'm looking to see what the increases are, and it's like, I, I don't see why this number is so low, because all these numbers are pretty, and the number I'm looking at is a published budget, because the published budget only has.
But they're not, so they gave the county attorney four seventy-seven, they gave custodial a hundred and fifty-two. They gave District Court three forty-nine. Oh, I know what it is. They, they left this here. The difference they gave here.
Okay.
And in order for me to get to here, I had to transfer that.
Okay, so that's where I changed, so what changed was, in our, in our, in our published budget, what was opposed to have happened, and that's where the change is. In our published budget, when we were working it up, we said, we were gonna take two hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of the sales tax and give it to the, the.
Sheriff, instead of giving it.
Which adds, right, which adds to our cash reserve.
That's right.
In the new one that I'm asking, because that didn't happen, that's why I was just like.
That didn't happen in the published budget.
In the published budget. It did not, which is, that's why I was.
So it made our reserves look lower.
Yes, because there was two things that I focused on on the budget, was I wanted to lower, I wanted to lower the mill as low as possible, I wanted, more than that, I wanted the, the mill as low as possible, I wanted to cut expenditure as much as possible to a point of almost bleeding, okay, but not quite, and then I wanted to build the cash reserve, because I felt that we need to build the cash reserve, because I'm trying to get us to a position where we, we, we could be, not next year, but hopefully the year after, where we're good with bonds, I, you know. So I don't know, that's, that's where the difference is, that change right there, and that's why I asked you to do this.
And really, we may not be adding to the cash reserves again, because we took from that benefit reserve to pay for benefits in that next budget, from what I understood.
There's no reserves in the employee benefit fund.
There was, though, right?
There was, yeah.
Yeah.
But there's none now.
Thank you.
Which scares me after I looked at the health claims.
Where are we at now?
I'm good, I just, I just need to understand this document, but, there's so many different ways to skin this cat, let's just continue going where we're going, please.
What are we at now?
Oh.
Corner, we're leaving alone for now.
Okay.
We're gonna put fifty thousand.
In that twenty-five column, if you'll allow me to, so like, you can see what it's gonna do, because I really think you're gonna, you're gonna spend that.
Yeah. I think that's the consensus.
I gave that consensus look.
Huh?
I gave that consensus.
I saw the look.
Learn the looks.
Deer caught in the headlights. All right, so, what next? I don't see anything else that we really went up there.
So we took care of all the legal requirements, correct? Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
The, yeah, and the county attorney, that one, that one barely changed.
Well, there's a bunch, I mean, we went through all this before.
I know, I remember doing that, yeah.
Yeah, so I'm just saying.
I mean, we went through this page, this general fund page, pretty tight, but I don't, I don't know that.
Yeah, I mean, well, before, when we sat in here in the last work session, we went all the way through to pay, all the way through, all of it, to page, that's what I thought we had here published, so, that's what I'm looking at this here in front of us. I'm hoping, so, with all the changes that we've made, do we, can we have an ideal of what the mill will be?
You will be over what you published.
And I didn't think we could go up.
You can't, but that's where you will land.
Because alls we've done is add.
Right.
Since we've.
That's okay, that's all right, we'll, we'll work through this.
Okay.
The cutting's getting ready to begin, I got some cuts, so. We'll start listening to the screaming.
There's nobody here to scream, there's nobody here who the budget says. Jennifer, that's it.
What did we decide on the intellectual disposits?
Are we gonna do the thirty-seven or the fifty-five?
I thought it was, the intellectual was a shall, no, it's optional.
And the published.
And then always have to respond to them and tell them that we don't have the funding to produce for the twenty twenty-four budget.
At least for now, let's leave it like it is.
What is leave it like it is?
At the thirty-seven.
Okay.
Quick question, while you guys are messing with.
With the cuts.
On, on this budget that was published, Madam Clark, did we take into account removing one point four percent from everybody?
The one that I produced to you.
I don't think we took one point four percent from one, David.
You only took it from a few people, um, on the published one, though that far column of yours takes it.
This one? So the one with the yellow takes it? My, my thing is, this is an exercise, because we have the clerk here, and she has the computer, so we can, it's, it's a numbers game, let's play with the numbers. My, my thing is valuation of, went up one point four percent, okay, and I'm saying we cut one point four percent from everybody. That, let me clarify that, we take one point four, one point four percent away from everything that is not locked down by a statute. So those things that are locked down by statute, we have to pay those, that's the way we do it, we pay those, but everything, to include us, one point four percent.
And I thought that you, um.
I thought so too, but that's not what happened, because that, remember, I'm asking about this document right here, this is the published budget, well, there's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that didn't come out of, that didn't come out of the sales tax to fund the sheriff on this, on this budget. So that's why the mill levy is only a hundred, not the mill, the, the cash, the cash reserve is only a hundred and twenty-two thousand, makes sense? So what I'm saying on this budget.
Let's, let's hold for just a second, and figure out where, I mean, I want to know where we're at on the mill.
Sure, sure.
To get to fifty-nine point nine, you need to cut thirty-seven thousand, two hundred and seventy-nine dollars.
Okay, but what is it right now, with all these changes?
Sixty point one six nine.
Sixty point what?
One six nine.
And then we need to cut thirty-seven.
Two seventy-nine.
To get to what mill?
To get back down to fifty.
To what we published.
I mean, actually, it's fifty-nine point nine to fifty-nine point nine three six, is that what you want to get to?
Yeah. That's what was published.
Thirty-two thousand, two eighty-seven.
Thirty-two thousand, two eighty-seven, to fifty-nine point nine three six, okay, so now, with that in mind, Commissioner Tran, let's plug in your numbers.
Yes. Could you do that first? Oh, wait, let's go through the numbers real quick, let's go, let's go through the numbers, starting with county commissioner, and work our way down, make sure the numbers all jive.
All right.
So page, uh.
Is your goal to get to reserves?
My goal is to, yes, it is.
How much do you want to increase it?
Well, that's not, that's, no offense, how much do you want to pay for this car, that's what it's, I don't, that's not, I just want to know, I want the reserve, but I want to cut as much spending as I can and keep the mill levy down, what I get in the reserve is the last thing, it's mill levy first, cut and spending second, okay?
Let's just start, let's just start with your number, let's go right down the line.
Yes.
And then we'll, we'll see how that.
I'd rather say, this is how much money we have, this is how much money I expect to be in the reserve at the end, um, we'll figure out where the money we have can go.
Okay, the published, uh, let's.
Okay, I, I mean, let me just, he's worked on this.
Oh, gotcha.
So I, I want to, at least giving his time to.
So on the county commissioner, because the budget was one forty-eight, five eighty-five, that's for five commissioners, correct? Am I reading that right? So cut one point four out of that, please. One point four percent.
Back over here to.
Yeah, actually, one point four oh percent was what the increase was. Yeah, actually, one point four oh percent was what the increase was.
Okay. Let's do, and your, the clerk's budget was one thirty-three, four eighty-nine, correct?
The what? That, that one we might have already cut.
You did.
Yeah, I understand.
No, it's at one thirty-three, four eighty-nine now.
I know, it was already cut the one point four percent the last time you cut it.
Yeah, we did. That's the one, that's, that's on my scratches there.
Perfect, perfect.
So what was the County Commissioner's cut? What is it now? It's one forty?
It, on the published, it's one forty-eight, five eighty-five.
Yeah. I thought it was at higher than that.
I thought it was one, I thought it was one point four, not one point zero four.
Sorry, okay, I was sixty-nine.
One point four? Joe?
I'm sorry?
Was it one point four or one point zero four?
One point four.
County Commissioner.
That's what I thought, one point four.
Yeah, that's what I did. Oh, no, I didn't.
No, you want, you want one point zero four.
Susan, huh? What was that number again?
One point four.
One point four.
No, I mean for the County Commissioner. Two thousand eighty, oh, the total amount that they have, one forty-eight, five eighty-five. Right, I had that. We need to cut two thousand eighty dollars out of it.
Two thousand eighty?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so the clerk we leave alone, County Treasurer is one seventy-five, six eighty-seven, minus one point four, please.
Okay, did anybody give the number for?
Which one did you just say? Sam, I'm sorry.
One seventy-five, six eighty-seven was for the County Treasurer.
Did you get the number for, uh, what the cut is on the commissioners?
County Treasurer.
Yeah, two thousand.
The county.
Well, we know how much. Do you know what the new total is?
Oh, no.
The County Treasurer, we actually did cut that back down to.
Say what?
I believe the Treasurer we had cut back down to, to twenty twenty-five. The same budget, one seventy-five, six eighty-seven was twenty-five.
Alright, so we leave the Treasurer alone. So on your list, which one did we not go back to the old?
Um, the.
The counselor?
Yeah, County Attorney.
Okay.
No, the counselor, we cut from ninety-six to seventy-five.
Okay.
Um.
The County Attorney was four seventy-seven?
Yeah, and, and their previous was four seventy-one, eight eighty.
Four seventy-one, eight eighty. So we cut one point four percent from that.
Yeah, and you, you have that down to four twenty-six, eight hundred.
Yeah, but.
The reason why that is, is if you guys remember, I sent you salaries and where they are today.
Wow.
And that's where they are today. So it cuts, it cuts forty-five thousand dollars out of that budget.
Which one?
The County Attorney.
So it's at four seventy-seven, one sixty-four.
And.
But his number that he's looking at.
My number's four twenty-six, eight hundred. That was the new one that I was looking at. So we cut, if, on four seventy-seven, one sixty-four, can we cut one point four or not? Can we or can we not? That's a simple.
You cut way more than one point four, because it went from four seventy-seven to four twenty-one.
This is an exercise that I engage with Madam Clerk. She produced the number for me.
Okay.
That's, okay.
So we're not using this sheet here?
No, I am using the sheet. I'm not using the left block. I'm using the published budget.
You're not using the highlighted one? It says Sam's proposal.
Right.
I'm going, you're gonna cut it one point four every time he tells me to.
Okay. So what's, what's the final amount? I mean, what's?
Six thousand six eighty.
Six thousand six eighty.
For the County Attorney, off of one four seventy-seven, one sixty-four?
Yes. Um, the counselor, we already cut. Registered deeds, we already cut, if I remember right, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Um, custodial, uh, we left it alone. That was already cut, one fifty-two, was it not?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, courthouse general, it was five hundred and eighty-four, zero, one, nine. I think on this one, we left.
You can't cut.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say.
Insurance.
On who is it?
That's the courthouse general. The coroner, we left. It was at fifty. Do you wanna drop it down to what you said earlier, thirty-five? Just leave it at fifty. Okay. Can we cut that one point four?
Corner?
Mm-hmm, okay. County, uh, the finance. The county finance.
I don't, that.
That's twenty-five thousand.
What was it on the other?
That was an addition.
I don't see it on her sheet.
It's page six C.
It's on publish, it's on the published list. It's right here. County finance.
We're gonna have to start at the top.
I see it now, okay.
The numbers again, 'cause there's been too much bounce on our end.
Can I cut one point four? Okay, cut one point four, please. District Court, we have to leave alone. E, uh, emergency preparedness is sitting at sixty-four thousand five seventy-nine. Can I?
And I'm gonna starve that, but you can cut it if you want.
Okay, let's cut it for, for this exercise. Yes, ma'am, sixty-four, five seventy-nine. IT, one point four. Dispatch, I have to leave at two forty, correct?
Yeah.
Uh, juvenile detention.
Has to stay.
Has to stay. Health board appropriation.
We already cut back down to.
It has to stay, yeah.
The fair needs to go back up to five, please.
It's at ten, back up to ten.
I'm sorry. I'm, in my head, I need to add five to, add five.
Oh, add five, I got you. Okay, I'm tracking.
Sorry. Elderly appropriation, we have it at twenty-four, three. We're good with that?
We went to forty-eight, six.
Okay, add that, please. Conservation appropriation is.
Twenty-five, that's cut.
This is murder trials, right? Jury trials, fifty?
So we, yeah.
HR, can we cut HR or not?
They have a contract for a whole year for when they started, so.
So seventy-one, six. Alright, ma'am. Give me the grand total. I think that raised.
You didn't go through, do the appraiser and any of the others?
The appraiser, well.
Ten, they didn't, um, increase, ten thousand fifteen dollars.
How much?
Ten thousand fifteen.
So we can't, we don't, we don't have to do that, though. You can take that back off.
Who increased?
The appraiser.
That's what your decrease would be, is ten thousand fifteen dollars.
Yeah.
Yeah, we better keep going.
And then we need, so just on that exercise alone, we cut ten thousand dollars off, just by doing that, the one, one point four percent. And we're still shy of twenty-seven thousand dollars. What's the mill levy right now with that, please?
Um. Sixty point oh nine seven.
Sixty point oh nine seven? Okay, can you go down to law enforcement? And his budget is twenty, two point three million, two million, three hundred, twenty-six thousand, twenty-two dollars is his budget. Can you remove two hundred fifty thousand dollars from that, because that money's gonna come out of the sales tax?
So take two hundred fifty thousand out of his budget?
Yeah, or do it like you did like this. I don't know how you did that.
I, I, that's gonna like significantly change lots of things. It's a revenue.
Right.
And I gotta do it in two places, so give me a second.
Okay.
But if you don't, if you don't levy it, it won't go to your reserves.
Yeah, it will. I'll show you how. Um, before we do that, I'm gonna show you where we're at. Jennifer, what's that trick? You're at fifty-eight point two nine four.
On mill?
Mm-hmm. And so we can add two hundred and twenty-seven, seven twenty-eight to your reserves. And the general fund.
So you just, you levy it to the general.
But again.
Without being dedicated to anything. So you're still levying the ad alarm tax for your reserves, but the sheriff will use sales tax, because it can be used for sheriff. And not just everything. It's a good idea, Sam, without cutting his budget.
That gets you to three hundred and forty-nine thousand eight fifty-four cash reserve in the general fund.
Three hundred what?
Three forty-nine, eight fifty-four.
But it's that two fifty from sales tax, sustainable year after year.
This is a one-time deal.
One-time deal.
Watch the mill.
And I've still got, since, I'll have to go in and make all those changes, but, and have to fix my neighborhood revitalization, so this won't be the final, but it'll get you close. Fifty-nine point nine three six. So I, once we make all those changes, I have to go in and fix the NRP. It's, it's just a process that I have.
Fifty-nine for what, ma'am?
Nine three six.
Okay, so.
It'll most likely go down a little bit.
Not counting what he just did, but back to where we were at with all the stuff that we added. I mean, do you have, uh, a
A change?
Exercise you wanna try? No.
Do you want her to save this plan, or you wanna add to the plan?
I mean, but, I, I mean, I, I've been working on, and, and the budgets change every time I work my numbers, so now the numbers I work today are not the same, but anyway, we'll start and see what happens.
Thanks, sir.
Did you wanna go through the rest of them, the appraiser, um, election employee benefits? I wouldn't mind going over them, because we haven't went over those.
Well, the appraiser, he's already done, well, okay, I, sure, let's have the primary session.
So here's, here's what I'm, here's what I'm, uh, suggesting, is, uh, and I was going off of the original sheet that you handed out last night. And it is a twenty-five percent adjustment off of the commodities on, um, everywhere, everyone, basically. I mean, you can see there on that top list. It's, and I'm sho, calling this thing Budget A, what she, what she gave us last night. So you adjust off of everybody's commodities, and that's the amount of the adjustment, and then what the, the new amount is. And what that brought us, what, when you look at all the, at the numbers, and you get down here to the back page, by ju, by adjusting the twenty-five percent, it brings the mill to, um, fifty-seven point thirteen.
What is everybody's commodities?
That'd be paper, fuel.
Ink.
Huh?
Ink. Ink.
Yeah.
Yeah. Pencils.
It's what we call XB items, stuff that you.
Okay, so that, that, that brings us down, that brings it down to fifty-seven point one three mills off of, off of the sheet that was supplied last night. So if you take those cuts and you leave, and you bring the mill to fifty-eight, then I'm looking at a cash reserve pretty high.
But how do you cut those commodities if that's, if they, they said they pinch and you scratch paper now? I'm not sure how we.
Well, I'm not just talking about paper, it's.
He's talking about centralized.
I'm talking about tightening your belt, you know, a little bit. And then if at the end, you know, we start getting towards the end of the year or end of the year.
Oh, I understand. Then you would supplement them some paper or whatever.
You know, off, you know, 'cause if the reserve goes up.
So you get one sheet when you go to the rational. That's what he's trying to say. Be nice.
Well, we can always put, uh, CRASH and toilet paper out.
Yeah, those are the best.
Right, right, Mr. Walker? C, C RASH and toilet paper?
C is a robot.
They don't have C RASH and toilet.
Oh, yeah, it's a square and hole in the middle, right?
M R E.
Yeah, I've had both.
What's that said for?
Yeah, meals.
Meals ready to eat.
Oh, I didn't, that, it's not bloody, correct? That was in the column, meals ready for EPOD.
My concern would be in Irving Bridge, so when you cut commodities, you're cutting, uh, repairs to vehicles. That's a hundred and ninety thousand dollars you're gonna cut out of that budget for repairs. Um, I'd be concerned there. Um, election. I don't think I can cut that much, just because of all the new.
What was election? How much was?
Six thousand two hundred fifty, because of all the, um, ballots I have to run. If I have a special election, then it's even worse than that.
So, alright, let's, I, I don't wanna ditch the chair's idea right away.
Yeah.
Let's go through his list and see where we can cut. I mean, the commissioners can definitely, we, we have a fifteen hundred dollar budget for commodities?
I think they kind of bill us for this printer ink sometimes and printer paper, and they, they sometimes, because they know we use it too.
Really, the only one I, and, and again, and again, I'm talking about.
Take it out of our fund.
Tell me if my number, i- if the mill, they're on the back page, the very last page. If the, if we go to fifty-seven, um, fifty-seven point, uh, I can't remember now what it was.
One three.
Yeah, and, and the, the budget is set at that, and then by my calculations, if we kept that at the, at the budgeted for, um, authorization for expenditures, and the, and went with the fifty-eight mills on the tax, then we would have about three million left over.
Well, if you, so if you make these cuts, are you willing to fit those cuts into your reserves?
Well, I mean, let's see how it works towards the end of the year, if people are needing money.
I think she's asking if you wanna go ahead and levy for it.
Huh?
I think she's asking if you wanna levy for it in the general.
You're talking about three point eight million back into the general reserve? 'Cause that's what he said, well, he's projecting cash reserve of three point eight million dollars.
Well, I don't think you're gonna do that.
I'm not proofing the man's idea. I'm gonna, I'm gonna roll with it.
Oh, okay.
It's like, I'm listening, I'm talking.
What I, what I went by on numbers was that if your tax, at fifty-seven point one three, your, your tax is seven million, nine hundred and twenty thousand, eight hundred and fourteen dollars, and by cutting the twenty-five percent, you drop your expenditures down to sixteen million, six hundred and sixty-eight thousand, six hundred and eighty-seven dollars. So if you adjust the mill, if you leave the expenditures at that twenty-five percent cut, and then you add, you bring it up to fifty-eight mills, then your tax is at eight million, forty-one thou, yeah, forty-one thousand, three hundred and seventy-one dollars. So then when you figure up the difference, it gives you three million, um, eight hundred and fifty-seven thousand, two hundred and eighty-three dollars difference between. 'Cause I, I mean, I figured out my difference this way.
Are you, I guess my question is, are you trying to cut taxes, or are you trying to?
Well, I'm trying to do both. I, I, I'm reducing the taxes down to sixteen million and bring, or do, reducing the expenditures down to sixteen million, bringing the taxes to eight million, and there is, uh, uh, and then when you start adding in your, your available resources and your other funds, then it brings it back, you, you end up with a diff, with, with that, uh, three million dollars difference.
You won't. So you either have to levy for the same amount and just cut expenditures and move it over to your reserves. And if you don't do that, then you are, you're just, you're just cutting expenses to get the, the levy down. You're not, you're not gonna build your reserves unless you keep it at that fifty-nine point nine three six.
What if, what if you cut the difference? Fifty-eight is, is lower than fifty-nine, but it's, it's higher than fifty-seven.
What levy do you wanna be at fifty-eight? You're gonna have to cut two hundred and sixty-eight thousand, four hundred and seventeen dollars out of your budget current day. And that does not add.
What did I, what did I cut in, in the twenty-five percent on expenditures?
Looking up there.
What did I cut on expenditures?
I can't see those numbers. Can you see those, Sam?
Mm-hmm.
Was three hundred and thirty, three hundred and thirty-three thousand, nine hundred and seventy-three dollars and five, fifty.
So this little calculator over here to the side, is he?
Yeah.
'Cause this is what our mill levy's at. So if we wanna get to the desired mill levy, this is what I know we're gonna have to change. And this would just cut expenses. It will not add back to your cash reserves.
Right.
It only cuts expenses.
Okay.
Okay. I, 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 I'm not understanding, I mean, when I look at, at the math on this, with these numbers here, uh, on the, on the budget authority for expenditures and the tax, when I looked at the numbers of available resources and the other funds, which being landfill and, and EMS and that, I come up with the same way. I come up with the same set, you know, the same numbers that you got, where you got to fifty-nine. So I, I'm not understanding how the math don't work if, if we cut it to fifty, if we cut it by three hundred thousand dollars and, um.
Let me show you in real time. So we're just gonna, we're just gonna pick the general fund as an easy one to look at. If we cut, and this would be like we're cutting money all over the place, and I cut off three hundred thousand dollars. Okay, see that, I, I cut three hundred thousand. Over to the right, you can see that it lowers my mill levy. It says twenty-twenty-six estimated mill levy will be fifty-seven point seven seven three, but all that did was cut, cut expenses. It didn't do anything else. It didn't increase my revenue, it didn't do.
Well, I, I understand that, but now if, if, if you leave the cuts at that level and you change the mill to fifty-eight, then you just increased your taxes, so there is a, there's more money coming in and less expenses to cut or less expenses to cover.
No, there's not. To get more money coming in, you have to, so it goes back to the revenue neutral rate. Fifty-seven is our revenue neutral rate. That means that you're gonna raise the same amount of money that you raised the previous year. So if we keep the levy flat at fifty-nine, we're taking advantage of the increase in assessed valuation. So our assessed valuation went from.
One hundred and thirty-eight million.
It went from one hundred and thirty-three million to one hundred and thirty-eight million. So by leaving your levy flat, you get to take advantage of that increase in assessed valuation by keeping your levy flat. If you lower your levy, then you're just getting less money coming in. But if you cut expenses, the only way I can look at it is you're cutting services.
I'm cutting spending.
Yeah, you're cutting services.
Right.
Yeah, so if you cut spending, and that's the case, you're not gonna increase revenue anywhere. You're just cutting expenses.
I, I, I don't, I'm not seeing, I mean, I, the numbers that I worked up, I'm not seeing how that, how that doesn't work.
Okay.
I mean.
Because you don't have any revenue coming in, you've cut the levy.
I cut expenses by three hundred thousand and increased the le- uh, the tax by, uh, set the mill at fifty-eight versus fifty-seven.
But to get the, no, to get the mill at fifty-eight, you've cut two hundred and sixty-eight thousand four hundred and seventeen dollars.
From fifty-nine.
Right.
Yeah, but I cut, I cut more than that, I cut three hundred and thirty-three thousand nine hundred and seventy, seventy-three dollars in the twenty-five percent cuts.
Okay.
And that changed it.
Where's your revenue coming from?
That changed it. Taking that off of the, off of the commodities, that changed the, the mill from fifty-nine point nine three six to fifty-seven point one three.
Okay.
So that, I mean, when you tax for that, then the, the budgeted expenditures are at sixteen million six hundred and eighty-six thou- you know, whatever, so I got sixteen million six hundred and sixty-eight, six eighty-seven. And then your, uh, tax was at, is set at seven, um, at fifty-seven mills is set at seven million nine hundred and twenty eight hundred and fourteen dollars. So leaving the expenditures the same and increasing your bu- your mill to fifty-eight, you generate eight million in taxes. So there's a difference when you, when you calculate all, when you calculate the numbers, there comes a, a difference of three million.
That's.
I mean, I'm not, I'm.
But that's not how it works. Is anybody else following?
Following.
Can you, can you, can you tell me where you're gonna set the mill? Fifty-eight?
Fifty-eight.
Okay, tell me what that number is.
That generates.
How much does it generate?
Eight million forty-one.
Write that down, eight hundred, how much?
Eight million forty-one.
At fifty-eight?
Which is only an increase.
I thought it was, uh, yeah, eight million forty-one three hundred and seventy.
Forget about the mill, forget about the mill levy on expenses, just tell me what the number is on expenses.
The expenses?
Yeah.
Sixteen million.
The expense is gonna be six, so where's, so where's that other eight million come from?
That eight million is off of fifty-eight mills. But you're wanting to know what the expenses are, the expenditures, which is all, is, is the budgeted off of all the, all the different departments, their expenditure amount.
You've only increased revenue sixty-three thousand dollars and nine, sixty-three thousand nine hundred and five dollars over the previous year's, um, levy.
That's what I missed.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm just going off the math that, that was laying in this sheet in this, in this report here um, and duplicating it with different numbers.
Yeah.
Can I ask, can I ask you another question? So, so sixteen million and eight million, where's the other eight million come from?
That is off of, um, available resources, which is carryover and, uh.
Okay, what is that?
Well, that was what's in your, in your deal here.
Tell me what that number is.
It's probably the little funds in the sales tax.
You're looking at sales tax.
You're talking about sales tax and all the little funds.
You cannot include sales tax into levy funds.
Okay, so the.
But you need to add that, I, what I need to know is what the expenses are and what the revenue is. So you gotta add eight million and, and then tell me what all the other sales taxes, how much?
Okay, so, uh, well, here, I'll give you a copy.
I can't see, so.
So, uh, uh, available resources.
I can't read.
Uh, available resources adds up to four million eight hundred and ninety thousand five hundred and ninety dollars.
Somebody add that up, eight million we're gonna get plus four million, where's the other money come from?
That's, that's the, and then the other funds was, uh, your landfill, uh, your, your tax, the other taxes on ER and GL and all that, and that totaled three million eight hundred and, eight hundred and fifty-seven thousand two hundred and eighty-three dollars.
Can we add up all those numbers and see what they are and then subtract them from what?
Hang on, let's calculate right here.
So if you, if you take.
Add up all those numbers and just see what the difference is what the surplus is.
Can I make a, can I make a statement? Those are dedicated funds that cannot be used for a holistic approach. You can't, you can't do it as a holistic approach because your sales tax money has to be used for a specific purpose. So you cannot use that into your revenue.
Right pocket or left pocket, it's still.
No, it, it can't be that way though, Tim. It has to be, the sales tax has to be used for the sales tax purpose. So it cannot be considered when you're looking at it from a levy tax perspective. You technically can only look at the expenses of.
So, so just, just, just.
I get what everybody's saying, you know what I'm saying? And I get what you're saying and I get what you're trying to do.
Bear, bear with me just a second, because I took, I took your, your budget that you handed out last night and I took the, uh, budgeted expenditures of seventeen million fifty-seven thousand six hundred and sixty dollars and a, uh, tax of eight million three hundred and nine thousand seven hundred and eighty-seven dollars. So if you take that eight million three hundred and nine seven eight seven and add the four million eight hundred, eight hundred and ninety thousand five hundred and ninety and add the, um, three million eight hundred and fifty-seven thousand two hundred and eighty-three dollars, you get seventeen thousand, seventeen million fifty-seven six sixty.
And what's the difference between those two numbers?
One is the available resources and, and.
So what's the difference between those two numbers?
Well, I mean, you add those numbers together, that gives you the, the expenditure rate that we got now.
May I give you a scenario? I get, I understand what you're trying to do because you're trying to say, let's take twenty-five percent of their commodity budgets. But you see how much the sheriff is already in here and he has his commodity budget and he's alre- and he's still asking for more. The clerk has had to ask for, uh, different things for this change that we've done. So they already use all their commodities and still ask for more. Um, so unless we can learn to say no, then this isn't ever gonna work.
Well, it'd be very hard to work, I wouldn't say never, but it'd be hard to work.
It would be hard unless we learn to say no. I, I think, I think it's, if you think we can get it done, then.
It's a collective, I mean, it's, it's on you guys, I mean, all, all, what I'm saying is that I think, I think it's workable.
Chairman. Not pooping, we're not pooping your pants, we're just talking about it.
Yeah.
We still behind you, okay, let's work it through. It's just, don't, don't, don't shut down yet.
I'm not.
And let's just look at the two biggest that it's gonna cut. If we're gonna, the two biggest budgets that are multi-million budgets are, uh, Public Works and Sheriff.
Well, if I.
And so it's, it's really them that we're gonna.
Hold, hold off, hold off right here. If I'm gonna suggest that I cut a, uh, twenty-five percent of a thousand dollar commodity budget out of the treasurer's office, then I'm gonna cut twenty-five percent out of, out of the sheriff's. It, to me, I went across the board, it's, it's equal. If you don't, if you don't want to tighten your bell and, and, and get us through this.
Yep.
You know, this year, you know, because, I mean, if my numbers, the way I figured the math, if it works out, i- i- if it's, I don't, I don't know how the math doesn't work the other way here, if it works on these numbers, if it don't work on the other numbers.
May I suggest something? We take a quick recess from Commissioner Beerbauer's idea for now. Just, just, let's step back, let's do something. And let me have one alibi, okay? I need an alibi real quick. Joe, the sheriff's budget went up how much? Four point?
Three.
Four point three, right? And of that four point three, that include the one point four percent valuation?
It was in place of the one point four.
Okay, so everybody else got a one point four increase, the sheriff got a four point three percent increase, okay? So the only budget I didn't touch was the sheriff. So Madam Clerk, go back to my, um, go back to my budget, please.
Law enforcement?
Go to law enforcement and, um, I need you to look at me and so I can explain it, you tell me if I got it right. What I did on my document was I went back to the original budget, okay? And I removed one point four percent of the, before we gave him two fifty out of the sales tax. I don't know if it makes a difference, so you tell me, but basically it is, I went in there and removed one point four percent out of his budget. Okay, and the difference between the one point four percent in the two, the two numbers was thirty-two thousand dollars. So there's a thirty-two thousand dollars we need boom right off the bat. But I would still, so what I'm saying is, what number, whatever number we have for him right now, we remove one point four percent, he would still get a raise of.
Do you want it on both sides?
No.
You'd remove two point nine.
Why would I remove two point nine?
That's the difference of what you gave, you already removed the one point four.
What he would give.
Yes.
Well, I thought you wanted to take it back.
No, I want to take one point four percent off of his budget, he would still get a, basically, three percent pay raise. I'm gonna, three percent increase in his budget, which is more than everybody else.
And how do you justify giving the sheriff more than everybody else?
I'm not.
Oh.
I'm not justifying any of this, I'm going off of what the, the, the committee, committee recommended, I'm not going against.
Okay.
Makes sense?
Yep.
And based upon.
So you're using their recommendations and just taking the one point four?
Yes, because initially, when, when, when they came to us and said, everybody got, well, everybody got one point four and the sheriff got four, four point three, and I understood their rationale. So I'm like, okay, so where are we at?
Fifty-nine point seven oh one.
Fifty-nine point what?
Seven oh one.
And what's the cash reserve?
Uh, three hundred and whatever, I told you before. We could go up a little bit if you want to go fifty-nine point nine.
And that's what you published in the paper?
Uh, I can go up to what we published in the paper, which is fifty-nine point nine three six.
Is that higher than last year?
Mm-hmm.
I, I, I don't want to go higher than last year, I don't know about the two.
Cut what?
Do, I don't want to go, if we published higher mill than what we used last year, I don't want to take advantage of it.
Well, the first, uh, go ahead.
Yeah, just a little bit, we went up just a little bit, point, it was three six.
Oh.
So.
What, what did?
Um.
The published projection.
Published projection, it was higher than what it was the previous year.
Yeah, because we're at fifty-nine point nine, fifty-nine point nine three six, which the initial one point four percent that I took off of everything gave us fifty-nine point nine three six. It gave us that mill that we published, but it only gave us, I don't remember.
Do you want it at fifty-nine point nine?
No, no, I, I like it at fifty-nine point seven, I like the lower number.
Okay.
Okay, so how, how much?
I could add twenty-seven thousand dollars to your cash reserves if you put it up at fifty-nine point nine.
And if I keep it at fifty-nine point seven?
It's the three hundred something.
And that's still utilizing two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of the sales tax?
Sales tax, yes.
Oh my goodness, three forty-nine, eight fifty-four.
What'd you say, let me see. Okay, all right, thank you. So that increased a little bit from the previous one, didn't it? Because I didn't write down that number, I, I didn't write down that, that number.
No, I haven't changed it, now, the one thing I haven't done, you'll give me a chance to go through and I have to fix all the NRPs to see if, how that affects us. So give me just a few minutes to do that.
Who all gets a piece of the NRP and their funds? Who all does it go to?
Every fund is affected that we levy for, but it's the City of Fort Scott, Juco, us, um.
Well, that's because we're not gonna do those collections, I mean, that five percent that we keep and don't kick back out to that developer?
That five percent sets in a fund right now, it isn't get allocated.
Who has control of that fund?
Um, it generally goes to the, um, appraiser because they administer the program.
But the appraiser is under the control of the commission, so the commission really could allocate that fund.
Yeah.
Where they want, what, how much is in that fund?
I don't know, and, and the reason why I tell you that is because it's messed up.
Because we didn't give out all the checks that we were supposed to give out?
Yeah.
I've been noticing that.
Checks to whom?
To people that applied for the revitalization, they're not getting their rebates.
Rebates.
It's another conversation for another day.
Well, I want my rebate check, no, I can't, I can't get a rebate check, I'm sorry.
And so that's why we, that fund needs to sit there untouched until somebody gets it figured out?
Yeah.
Well, you know.
And I know Jennifer well.
And I think that the, the people that haven't got theirs will complain pretty quick, so they, we should, we should be able to.
A lot of those, we, Matt and I worked together and we got a lot of those cleaned up early in the year. Um.
Hey, I got faith in you.
Jen, we have a process that.
What's that? I said that, I got faith in her.
We have a process now that, um, it goes to Matt, Matt does his thing, he, uh, gives us a report. And Jennifer will get that report, she will double check that the checks go out with the correct amounts.
Okay.
So, we do have a process.
So it's been, it's been corrected?
It didn't work the process.
Yeah, the system was a mess, um, and when you start out with that, with our system, that way you can't fix it mid-year. You have to wait until a full fiscal, fiscal year, so we do everything manually.
You want to talk about your stuff?
We'll wait, uh, I'll have her plug in some stuff then.
All right. Sorry, sir.
Really, what we're doing, when we cut those contractuals or the commodities, I'm, I imagine is essentially we're gonna end up cutting some services because if they have to have a commodity, or something that's in that commodity that's under contract or whatever, they have to keep getting it, um, they're gonna have to keep getting it. So eventually it's gonna trickle down to staff that they're gonna cut, I would imagine.
Well, we're already looking to attack the employee benefits anyway. I mean, that's what we've been looking at attacking.
That's a, not a word I would use.
I mean, you, you, when you're, when you're pulling money out of that, out of that fund, which is, eh, eh, you know, versus cutting spending.
Yeah.
Then you're, you're, you know, you're taken out, you, you, and to me, you look at, you look at the employee benefit. then you're, you're, you know, you're taken out, you, you, and to me, you look at, you look at the employee benefits, 'cause it's the, probably the biggest fund that we got.
So, it went down just a little bit, fifty-nine point six six.
Yeah, and, you know, versus tightening your belt and maybe cutting the spending a little bit.
And what's the cash reserve?
We don't know. We don't, I mean,
Three eighty?
I wish I would've started in January looking at, uh, all the-
I thought it was-
Three twenty-four.
Every little item that, that, that's on that AP.
Yeah, yeah.
And saying, okay, how much are we spending? How much are we spending here, and why? You know, why did we spend forty-seven thousand dollars for transmission? Or whatever it was that, that I saw on the last one, you know, where they worked on the, on a, on a big truck, or, or whatever they're getting.
So, it's not three, so it's, you know, I'm sorry, it's, it's-
Or why don't we keep our money into this loader, that loader? Or that. I mean, that, there's a lot of stuff that we could do on the spending, and I'm just looking at-
And the cash reserve is thirty-four nine.
I'm just looking at, I just went across the board and said, what would happen if we just tightened our belt by one quarter? One quarter.
It just won't give you the three million dollars, when it works all the way through the program.
Well, that wasn't, that wasn't, uh, the, the, the three million wasn't off of this. This adjustment, uh, i- if you take all the commodities, and you don't even look at, at, at changing, it drops the mill down to fifty-seven point one. If you take twenty-five percent of all the commodities, it drops it down to fifty-seven point one. If you just left it at that, we would be below revenue neutral.
Okay, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna put in your number, which is, uh-
Just, I can give you the numbers on each one of the commodities.
Nine three three nine seven three. I'm just gonna, that's, that's the number that you had.
What was it?
Uh, three 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 nine seven three, sorry, I need to put that in as a, nine seven three.
Where's that? I don't see.
It's on the total.
It's on the very first page.
First page, under Adjustment.
Okay.
Right here, sir.
Yeah.
So, I'm gonna take that off as an expense. It gets your levy down to fifty-seven point two seven seven.
Yeah.
See?
So, what is the, um, tax on that, when you, when you factor in the tax? When you're looking, you know, if I'm looking-
Seven million nine hundred and forty thousand nine sixty-seven.
Okay, so that's our tax, and then what does that reduce our expenditures down to?
You've reduced taxes from the previous year of thirty-six thousand four ninety-nine. Your total expenditures are still seventeen million one eighty-eight one thirty-seven.
Well, you're, you'd have to go into each one of those budgets and take out whatever it is.
I've already done it.
Okay.
Holistically in the general fund.
Okay.
I just plugged the number, so that-
But see, I was going off-
You'd have to take it out of their budgets, though.
Yeah.
Or we would really overspend.
Yeah, yeah. So, I just took the number that you said to take out of every one of those, or I think when I'm making all those changes, 'cause I won't ever get them back, right?
Okay.
So, so your expenditures dropped down to seventeen million one eighty-eight one thirty-seven.
Off the general fund?
No, off of all funds.
Well, so then, I don't know. I mean, because my number was sixteen million.
What was your number?
Sixteen million, six hundred and sixty-eight thousand, six hundred and eighty-seven, total expenditures. That's how I got to fifty-seven point one.
Five hundred and nineteen thousand dollars somewhere difference, and I don't know what that would be.
'Cause the total general fund would be, um, the adjusted value is only sixty-six off of all the general, general fund departments that had commodities.
But when you- Mr. Beerbauer, did you go through and, out of this budget and just pick out all the commodities, and that's a lot of work.
Yeah, it was a lot of work. Um, but, but from a, from a levy perspective, all you can do is look at the levy funds. And so, and, and you said that the, the difference was the three hundred and thirty-two thousand expenses, and so that's what I did, is I just took that third-
Well, then, all the, I, I didn't, I mean, I did not include any non-levered, uh, levy, if you look at that first list,
Right.
uh, where it says general fund, and then it goes down, and then after it says total general fund, then it's Appraiser, there, there's, all them are, um, levied funds.
Mm-hmm.
Um, with the exception of EMS, which we had a commodities list of ten thousand. You know, but also, they had it broke down even more than that, but I just went with the ten thousand. Uh, but, you know, like, the other ones that, that are off your available resources with, uh, the, uh, uh, no, I'm talking with the other funds on the, on the second page, which is landfill, and your taxes, and sewer, and opioid fund, and all them, that I kept separate. That, that's your non-leveed funds right there. None of them got touched in, in the expenditures.
So, then you can't, can't look at them, so all I can look at-
I didn't look at them.
Okay, right, so, but your expenses that you're including-
Outside of the general fund was the Appraiser, election, law enforcement, which also had corrections, toxic weeds, Road and Bridge, which also had Elm Creek and Special Bridge, and then EMS.
Can I ask you a question? While you're going through this gyration, I'm sitting there looking, it's like, why wouldn't it work if we do a merger of the cuts that I've put up there along with commodities, but rather than doing twenty-five percent cut on commodities, we do, and again, we're gonna play with numbers, so, I'm not firm on these numbers, so do a five to a ten percent cut on commodities, on top of the cuts that I've already done, how would that affect the budget? So, not only you cutting one point four percent off of the budget, but you're gonna cut another five to ten, we can figure out the number, but I'm just saying, five percent off of commodities across the board.
Can you give me an example of commodities?
Huh?
Commodities defined, please.
Yes.
I mean, it's, it, it, it's everything.
Okay, and so-
But, so, and we don't get a detailed breakdown of, of, of what they're asking for, so I think it's a projection.
Whatever they use for supplies.
It's, i- it is a projection that they're projecting, I mean, uh, every year.
The thought in the back of my mind here, though, is some of those commodities won't be able to go away, so essentially, we need to not put our blinders on and-
We're not.
Okay.
We're not, we're, 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 listen, we're, I, I am not blind to any of this.
So, I mean, I'm not saying we can't cut it and cut those budgets. We will, but it won't just affect commodities. I believe it'll affect personnel.
I'm sure it will.
Yeah, okay.
But I, I still wanna see the exercise.
Okay.
Is what I'm saying. I, I, that's just a suggestion, sir. It, this is your plan.
Whatever. I mean, it's collective.
Let's just, let's just go with the baseline of five percent.
And I'm not saying you have a bad idea, I'm just saying I don't wanna stick.
No, that's fine. I just still, I mean, I'm still not seeing how the math don't work, um, with me, you know, but-
I wasn't in deep on your math, so I, I wasn't in deep on the math there, so I, I was just, just the general idea.
'Cause I mean, you got that sheet, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah, you did a good job pulling all the numbers.
We're, we're doing, we're doing play money right now, so unfortunately, it has rule-like ramifications.
I borrow your staple.
Yes.
I'm tired of flipping these pages all over me. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Staples are a commodity.
That's right.
Yeah.
I bought my own staples.
That's what's gonna happen.
Pen gear, see? That, yeah.
I pretty much use my own-
Like the teachers' volume, their supplies.
My own paper. We even talked about buying a back, uh, a box of computer paper and bringing them up here and-
Yeah.
spreading them around to the office, just so we could help out with the commodities. I would imagine every taxpayer out there would donate a box of paper if they cut their taxes. I may have some in the closet, but it's-
May, may I have an alibi on these toilet paper issues? I gotta say that when I was in the army, they had toilet paper, and they called it on-way toilet paper. It was rough and tough and didn't take any shivers. I'm being polite.
That's funny. They do have pretty nice toilet paper.
Yeah.
What? Did she say my name? Tell my wife she's in hometown.
You'll have to take her on.
You got some trouble. Let me ask you this question while you're plugging away at numbers. When was the last time you saw such an in-depth dive into this budget process?
Um, since I've been here, never.
Seriously?
Mm-hmm.
This is the, this is the most in-depth dive into the budget process?
Mm-hmm. They would usually come in, um, individually and say, I want this, and then the next person would come in and say, I want this, and then I would do two or three presentations, and then they would-
Vote on it?
Vote on it.
This is Road and Bridge.
Wait, here. Did do, okay, what, what were the commodities that we couldn't touch before that, um?
I didn't.
We didn't go through, we just did it off of capital.
I didn't do it like on your appropriations.
Okay.
I left it, your appropriations.
Well, and you, yeah, I'll be honest, I don't like that last number. I, I don't like that last number, but to be fair-
What number?
The thirty-eight thousand dollars, um-
Off of who?
I think you're gonna really struggle with EMS, too.
Yeah, and, and, and again-
Well, their commodities was, uh, is broke down in a lot more detail, and so-
What do you want me to take it off of?
Of the ten thousand. That's the only way I took it off.
Okay.
I mean, they broke it down to medical supplies and oxygen.
They have to, by law.
Yeah. I wish everybody did it.
So, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna work out landfill right now, I'm not gonna work out those other ones-
No, I didn't, I didn't include any of the other fund, non-leveed fund.
Their monies, you didn't include those?
They're, they're non-leveed.
Right.
We do supplement them, though, correct?
No, not landfill.
The landfill, about seventy thousand, whatnot.
You do for benefits, yeah. I didn't touch benefits either.
Okay, that's good.
Well, they didn't have a commodity.
Yeah, because benefits isn't in their budgets, and it, it's not in anybody's. That's something I think that we need to-
Sixty-seven one twenty is what it is, so I'm just gonna take it off the one.
'Cause we don't-
What's that?
We don't know what it is. Susan, you figured twenty thousand per person for benefits? That's what you did in yours, that you gave us?
Yes, with a little bit of fudge of some individuals.
About twenty thousand per person?
Yeah.
So, we have three in the landfill, so that's around sixty.
Yeah. Do you have three in landfill now?
Yeah.
So, we have room to wiggle. It's fifty-six point seven nine three is the mill.
So, you lowered the mill?
Now, when I go in-
By going five percent.
I mean, you lowered, you lowered, you went below revenue neutral.
But it, did it change the cash reserve?
No, it won't change the cash reserve.
That's what I got. Was just leaving it alone at, at the numbers that I, that I did at twenty-five percent, without making any adjustment, it brought it down to fifty-seven point one, and that was, there's no, there was no, you know, the, the expenditures and the taxes and all the numbers added up, and there was, it was the exact same. But when you adjust the mill up a little higher, then you get a reserve. You get extra, because you're gonna tax more than your spending.
If you, if you do that exercise and cut those different things, and take it up to revenue neutral, do seven point five five oh, you could add a hundred and five thousand more dollars onto your reserves.
So, if we go to revenue neutral?
So, we can put money in the reserves and hit revenue neutral, but they're gonna hurt, these departments, they're gonna-
They're probably gonna come to you through the year and say, I can't make ends meet.
Well, we won't have any money, 'cause we didn't levy for it, so they're gonna have to.
They'll have to come ask for your reserves.
Well, we won't have enough reserves-
Wait, what you said?
To cover it all. So, they'll have to do other things.
So, what happens if you keep the expenditures as, as is, and you change the mill?
Hang on a second. That hundred and five thousand dollars is on top of the, of the three hundred and forty-nine thousand?
Yes, you could add that to it.
I mean, the Sheriff, you could give him money on the sales tax, but you'd deplete that pretty fast.
Right.
And Road and Bridge, they would always have their hard surface road tax.
Can't touch it for anything but hard road?
No, they can mow ditches on hard surface roads, they can patch roads, they can lay roads, um, but they have to justify it.
Who's that, one oh five one thirty-four?
So, then only the hard surface roads would get any work done?
Yep, yep. All them, all us gravel road people are gonna get, um, pushed aside. I think we already do, so.
That's not right, there's, there's no way that's right.
So, when you made those adjustments to all those, all those commodities and that, did it change your expenditure? Amount? The, the budget authority for expenditure, did it change that number?
Like this F column?
Mm-hmm. So, it come down here was sixteen, wasn't it?
It's, uh, seventeen, I don't-
I created my own rule.
Yeah. The seventeen one twenty-one was different than what it was in the beginning.
Yeah, I would have to make this way.
Yeah, so, so then, if you changed, if you left that number alone and changed your mill, wouldn't that increase how much money you're-
Reserve, reserve, the ones gonna force me to stick to the budget, stick to my budget. Right. It don't, don't, okay, so the question comes out, the question Mr. Wonderly asked is, is, if he's got, if, if he's a, if he's Public Works, he's got, I'm using Public Works, he's not his work, it's my work. If he's got a budget of ten thousand dollars and he cut five percent, goes on ninety-five hundred dollars, what keeps him from not, from coming back to us and asking for more money? Nothing stops that. The problem, the issue here is like, we would have to take a look at it case by case basis, because we are cutting.
Well, yeah.
My biggest question is-
To use your, to use your example, I'm sorry, I, I didn't mean to cut off-
My biggest question is what keeps them from spending it and coming to us saying, I've already spent this, you better cover it. Um, the only thing you could do is, I guess, what Susan had done in the first place, and leave your reserves in the benefit fund.
Right, well, my answer, my answer to that-
So, you couldn't, it couldn't be touched.
My retort to that would be, what stops them from doing it now?
Nothing, there, it happens.
Okay, so, so if, you can't use Public Works as the example, because Public Works falls under our umbrella, but let's just say, uh, the Sheriff's Office, if they, if, if we set that at, at, at a nine, you know, using your ten thousand, ninety-five hundred, and say they spend ninety-five hundred, and then they come to us in September and say, hey, we're out of money, and we need X number of dollars for this, and as long as it's a reasonable request, then we have to meet it, but if it's an unreasonable request, and if we're watching that, that APs as you go along each month and saying, why are you spending this kind of money on this? You know, 'cause we approve that every month, and a lot of times, we do it blindly.
Right.
And if we start looking at our spending in that more detail, then, you know, you, if it's an unreasonable request, you can deny it. And then they have to take, you know, then it goes to court, and, and the judge decides whether or not it's, it's reasonable or not. You know, that, that's the challenge that you face. Either we all get along and we tighten our belt, because we know- Either we all get along and we tighten our belt because we know we're in a budget crunch. And, uh, cause what I'm, what I, you know, and I still don't think that the numbers are, uh, the math is wrong. I just think that I'm looking out for taxpayers here. When you go to fifty-seven point one on, on your, your mill, we're, we're down there where that, you know, the only way you're gonna cut taxes in, is to cut services or you cut, you cut your employees. Because, you know, revenue neutral only gets you what you got last year. And if you're in the top fifty percent of the nation in high taxes, if you're in that counties, the only way to do that is to go below in revenue neutral and bring your, your, your spending down and under control. And, you know, I'm not saying, I just took twenty-five because I thought, well, you know, that's a...
It's a number.
Yeah, well, it's a good number to, to start with. You know, maybe five percent is, is, is probably the better way to start this year. But if we're going to get out of this, this, uh, cloud of be, of, of being high taxed in a poor county, I mean, we got fifteen, less than fifteen thousand people and we're, we're up there equal to, you know, over fifty percent of the country. I mean, we're, we're in the higher tax, you know?
I agree.
That's what I came on board for i- is that we gotta change the culture, we gotta change how we do things. If we don't change it, then we're just, we're just gonna keep spending, doing the same thing and plugging in the same numbers every year. And we're gonna get the same results. And then we're gonna keep saying, well, we should've done it, we should've done it.
Why do you think we're in the, um, higher tax bracket?
Well, well, we, we got a low population and we got, uh, no, no tax base coming in. Because we don't have, you, you, if you don't have more people coming in, you don't get more houses, you don't get more property tax. I mean, but...
There are a lot of houses on the teardown list every year that get tore down and, and there's no infill. There is a little bit of infill where you can get a clean deed, but there's not, there's not a infill everywhere that they tear one down.
And you can build houses, but they're gonna set empty if you don't bring people in to fill them. And then you gotta bring in people, you can't build three hundred thousand dollar houses and bring people in and try, and, and put them on a fifteen dollar an hour wage and expect them that they're gonna buy that three hundred thousand dollar house. They're not. Uh, you know, these are all, these are all, you know, uh, things that, that, that we should be working on in econo, you know, in our economic development and that type of stuff and working with our, our partners in the city and all that. But right now, today, our budget is based off of the fifteen thou, fourteen thousand some odd people that are sitting here paying property tax every year and getting taxed. I mean, we got people that are on single incomes, you know, and they're, they bought the house thirty years ago when they were a family and they, and they bought it at a base rate and now they're paying market value on it. Paying taxes for that on a fixed income. And, and they're worried about losing their home, the home, the only home they ever had. You know, so, I mean, if I can find a way to try to get that down, that's what I'm looking at.
You have solid reasoning, Mr. Rehber.
I agree, you haven't said anything I'm disagreed with this, so. The issue here is how we go about, go, no, go about doing this, so. What I, what I've, what I've seen so far is just, if we just remove the one point four percent, the mill rate's gonna be fifty-nine point nine three six, okay? And I didn't write down the cash reserve, but if, I, I wanna say it was up above three. But if we go and add, if we go and cut another one point four percent from the sheriff's budget, that mill rate goes down to fifty-nine point six eight six and the cash re- reserve goes up to three forty-nine and some change. If we merge what I proposed with what you're proposing, which is a five percent cut to commodities, that mill levy goes down to fifty-seven point five five zero, the, uh, cash reserve doesn't go up. Okay, but if we go...
I, uh, if, I'm gonna take her, her, um, what is it I'm looking at here? Your concern about cutting commodities that they're gonna come at, you know? I mean, for me, tighten your belt, you know, uh, try to, but I'll, 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 uh, let's just go with what you got and instead of, uh, cutting something that is kind of an unknown. We don't know how much, you know, right now, we do not know the commodities, except for EMS is the only one that outlined their, their cost uh, in detail. But I can guarantee you, starting twenty twenty-six...
They're gonna give us the detail we asked for.
Be careful what you spend your money on.
Yeah, I agree.
Cause I'm gonna be looking, I'm gonna be counting.
The other depart, there were some other departments that did give you that detail, I just didn't put it in the budget document.
Okay.
So, and I can produce that document.
But I can see it, I can see it every AP, I can see what, who's spending what and where, so that's, that's...
Mr. Rehber, you don't have a bad idea, and if we're gonna turn it around, you know, and expect people not to take advantage of every valuation, we have to do it first.
Yeah, I agree. I'm just saying, I mean, that, 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 that was, you know, right there is if you cut twenty-five percent, you, you know, you gotta tighten up your belt, but look what it does. You know, and I still think, I mean, if you cut it by three hundred thousand and, and you just adjust the mill up a little bit, then you, you, you bring in more taxes than your, than your expenditures.
Do you have it in your computer still as the five, Susan, of the, off their, each person's commodity? We had the three hundred and thirty-three in there when we were doing all this, so.
Three hundred and thirty-three, you want me to?
That three hundred and thirty-three thousand, that, that's why I hate doing all this because it can get real...
Well, there's too many numbers.
So you're at fifty-nine point two oh two right now. Let me go back through each page.
I was just saying, like, right there with what you just did on, on the adjustment of five percent and that, it adjusted the, the, the numbers. And if you just put the mill from the fifty-seven that it was there, put it up to fifty-eight, what does that do on our taxes? That should adjust your cash reserve as well.
No.
Why?
It won't adjust your cash reserve because you're not levying more. The way to adjust your cash reserve is to, to keep your levy at a certain amount. If you're just cutting expenses.
Well, that's what I'm saying, change the, the mill up.
He's gonna change the mill to fifty-nine.
So the thirty, this thirty-two five sixty-four is like all of the five percent, okay? So we are at fifty-nine point two oh two with your cuts. Oh wait, that's the thirty-two five, that's what we're cutting out of the share. You didn't cut anything from nine one one, right? We have to give that to the...
I'm just looking at what...
I put it in a different, I gotta figure out which fund I put it in, cause it's sixty, it's this one, I think.
Ucelene's?
Yeah, it stood in there, that's the sixty-seven one twenty is the five percent.
Okay, so to be, to be fair, so all three of us on the same board, the five percent commodity cut is sixty-seven thousand dollars, okay? I want you to focus on that number, sixty-seven grand. So if, uh, this is an exercise, so we'll talk as a, sixty-seven grand came out of the commodities. Now, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna say that's human beings, some human beings are gonna come back and they're gonna ask for money, but some human beings can say, you know what, we're gonna be okay, we're gonna, we'll figure it out, makes sense? So my faith in my fellow man is, there's gonna be some people who come back, but not everybody's gonna come back. Some peo, and if they come back, the number is sixty-seven, because if you give six, if you give sixty-seven back...
So no matter what you hand, you say now...
With his adjustment, with his one point four adjustment and the five percent adjustment, what's the mill at right now?
Fifty-nine point two oh two.
I thought it was fifty-seven.
No, because that had that three hundred and thirty-three, that's why, when we were, we were just throwing numbers on and then we hadn't taken that back out.
So we didn't, we didn't, okay, so we're at fifty-nine point two oh two. So if you took it to the published at fifty-nine nine three six, what does that, I mean, just the mill, just on the tax part of it, does it change our res, our, our reserve fund? So that's, that's exactly what I was talking about.
You could raise, you could raise your reserves up to a hundred and one thousand dollars.
On top of what?
On top of all those cuts you just made. So like if I went and put that hundred and one nine sixty-seven, that would get you back to your fifty-nine point nine three six that you look, that you published.
So that would be four, that would be roughly four hundred and, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars is what the reserve would be. And your mill would be at fifty, it was at fifty-nine four three, nine three six. So you get almost half a million dollar reserve, people get, their commodities are cut five percent, everybody's cut...
Sixty-five thousand in, in commodities cut.
Right.
And you raise by keeping the revenue, keeping the neutral or the mill at fifty-nine point nine three six, then we gain a hundred thousand in our reserve. So even if they did come to claim back the sixty-five percent, sixty-five thousand, we made thirty-five thousand.
Why doesn't it populate on that now, um, then, what?
What do you mean?
The cash reserve, cause it was populating a while back when we were doing it earlier. It would show up on cash reserve, wherever the cash reserve block is.
Uh, it's, so the cash reserve's all in the general fund.
Huh?
It's the graph, it's on what?
Oh, okay, so what's happening?
I, I tried to print with the grid, the grid lines, this is off as a... This is off as Excel, but I, I, I'm getting, the Excel that I'm used to is what I had on my computer at work versus what I got on, on this computer here, I don't know which button to hit to make the grid lines print.
And they might not have the whole version downloaded on the computer to be able to do it.
Sorry, just hit a four fifty.
Cause I think on my personal computer, I can do it.
Yeah, I would probably be able to.
And I'm not putting this on my personal computer.
Okay.
If that's what you guys...
I guess I could draw one out with pencil on it, really.
Okay.
What, what is the, what is the expenses last year in, in dollars and this, this year? What is it gonna increase from last year? It's sixteen million or whatever it is.
I don't have my twenty twenty-five book.
Well, I don't have the, this year it's gonna be, on the published one, it's gonna be seventeen million, seventeen million fifty-seven thousand six hundred and sixty dollars.
And what was it last year?
I don't have that number.
It's right here on it.
And can I, can I just say that, that's not a fair number because, now, if I went and looked at levy funds, I'd be okay with that. But sometimes we inflate our numbers in like the sales tax so that we don't have to republish at the end of the year. So if more money comes in, we have the ability to go ahead and send that money on downstream like we're supposed to.
I'm just curious what the, what the total...
So let me look at levy, that's more, a more accurate...
In twenty twenty-four, is that what you're looking for?
What was the twenty twenty-five budget authority?
Okay, twenty twenty-five, and then what do you propose for twenty twenty-six?
Okay, twenty twenty-five, I, I think we have to go back to twenty twenty-four to get actual, cause twenty twenty-five's not done.
No, what was your budget, not, your budgeted for twenty twenty-five?
Okay.
What was the budget?
It's on that draft sheet.
Yeah, I'm gonna look.
Page thirty-one.
Thanks for saying that, dude, I forgot all about that. Okay, so twenty twenty-five, the number... What'd you ask for again?
When did you budget for twenty twenty-five?
Sixteen, sixteen million...
Six hundred and eighty-one thousand.
Six hundred and ninety-four thousand four hundred and forty on X.
So sixteen million seven, and what is it this year, seventeen million what?
Seventeen mil, seventeen million fifty-five, fifty-seven thousand.
Well, I'm sorry, I meant the twenty-four, like I said, it was...
And what's, what percentage increase is that?
Seventeen eighty-eighty-one eighteen, yeah. That was the actual for twenty twenty-four, we don't know what the actual for twenty twenty-five is.
But I don't care about that, I just wonder what the budget, what you budgeted.
But that was what, that was what was budgeted, yeah. Yeah. And this year we're budgeting seventeen thousand fifty-seven, or seventeen million fifty-seven thousand six hundred and sixty.
He's, he's figuring what the increase is.
They budgeted for less for twenty twenty-five than they did for twenty twenty-four?
No.
What, that's what the sheet says?
That's what I was trying to, anyway, that's what I was trying to explain.
The actual, for twenty twenty-four was higher than...
It's not though.
What?
In twenty-five and twenty-six, you don't have your non-budgeted funds in there.
Oh, I see.
And you inflate your numbers in sales tax, you budget for the full amount that you think you're going to receive.
So you can spend the money.
So you can spend the money, but we never spend that amount of money. So when you look at this, you really need to look at your levy funds, only your levy funds.
Well, it'd be nice if there was a total line item before I added those others.
So I can tell you what they are. For twenty twenty-four, we spent fourteen million three hundred and three thousand four twenty.
Hang on, let me get to...
So it works out to about two point five and their CPI is like two point nine, so...
So let me get to my script here. You said twenty twenty-four?
It was fourteen million three hundred and three thousand four twenty.
Okay.
In twenty twenty-five, anticipated is twelve million five thirty-six three oh five. And twenty twenty-six, it's thirteen million four forty-eight seven oh seven. Now let me explain why there's a difference in twenty-five, we're looking at expenditures. From twenty-four and the previous years on, for whatever reason, when we were doing the state of Kansas health plan, all of the premiums flowed through as an expenditure, so employee and employer. And twenty-five, we're not doing that, we're just doing the employer cost. So there's a difference in about two million dollars because of that.
Okay.
So...
Two percent, I did it twice just to make sure.
That's the explanation.
Okay, so where are we at? Cause wanna keep going around the meritoria. Are we good with the one point four, with the five percent? Or are we, uh, one point four?
Well, before we decide on that, like, I, I personally think we need to talk about what your goals are, what your goals are and what my goals are and how three goal drive, I mean, are we congruent? Are we congruent on taking the one point four plus the five percent or just the one point four across the board? Or just the one point, there's three that I could think of right now. The one point four, leave the sheriff alone, which puts us at fifty-nine point nine three six. We take the one point four to include the sheriff, that puts us at fifty-nine point six eight six. Or we can go with, the last number I put was fifty-seven point five five zero?
That wasn't right.
No, because we had that three hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars in there, so...
So it ended up being fifty-nine point zero?
Fifty-nine point nine three oh.
Yeah.
And I haven't adjusted any R and Rs yet, but if that number will go down just a little bit when I adjust the R and R.
Is that with taking your five percent out of everybody's budget?
Uh-huh.
And taking, taking Sam's, which is one point four on everybody's budget?
So we're setting a fifty-nine point nine three oh?
Uh-huh.
And then what's the cash reserve on that?
The just...
It stayed the same.
No, 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 that fifty-nine point nine three oh, our cash reserve's at the four fifty.
Four fifty, okay. So the best bang for the buck and the most pain is the fifty-nine point nine three oh. It gives us the most money in cash reserve, but it hits our people the hardest. That hits them with the one point four percent across the board plus the five percent, five percent reduction in commodities, which is sixty-seven.
What's the one point four get you in cash reserve?
That's the one number I didn't, I didn't write down. I didn't write down, so I'm, I'm...
So take out the five percent?
It's, it's, I'm gonna, I'm gonna guess, I'm, I'm gonna guess it's somewhere, yeah, it's somewhere around three hundred grand. It didn't, the, the, the problem, the problem, the problem with the fifty-nine point nine three six, okay, was it, we still were lacking thirty-two thousand dollars.
No, so, so if you do both?
No, what, what I'm saying is, the, the original was fifty-nine point nine three six, that was the one point four percent that we took off of everybody but the sheriff. But we were shy thirty thousand, twenty thousand dollars in, in, I can't remember. We were shy twenty grand, so when you guys were talking about your budget, I was like, wait a second, I didn't take anything out of the sheriff, so I went back, took it out of the sheriff, which added, which gave us another two, minus thirty-two thousand dollars.
So just go with...
So if I take out your, your five percent you said, it pops us back up to sixty point four, but that just means it reduces our, cause we'll go, I, I would think we'd wanna stay at that fifty-nine point nine three oh, so we would go over and reduce our cash reserve by sixty-six thousand.
So how does it raise it if you're taking five percent off?
I took five, well, I took five percent off, you said, now just do away with the five percent. That'll increase it.
Right.
To meet our, the cash reserves, but I can go back and.
No, no, no. Well, I know, I, I thought that, well, I thought we'd gotten down with, with the combined to fifty-nine point three.
Yes, you did.
Yeah, okay.
But if I take it out of it, like you just said, okay, then don't do the five percent, then you have to go adjust your reserves down.
So, but if we keep it the same with both, both cuts, then we, uh.
Sixty-seven one twenty is what the cut is.
Yeah, and then we'll end up with four fifty.
Yes.
Okay.
The only cut that I would suggest, in addition to that, is that we don't levy it to the people if we don't need it. So to stay at the revenue neutral.
We're not at revenue neutral though.
We'd be a lot closer though.
But we're staying at that fifty-nine point three, not adjusted.
You're not, don't wanna do that.
No.
Don't wanna do that? You don't wanna do that either?
What?
If you go to revenue neutral.
You don't build reserves. I understand.
So it's the less, it's, it, one cuts the taxes for the people, but it doesn't do anything for the county. Doesn't help us.
Can we even? Do revenue neutral? If we, can we even do a revenue neutral?
That's right.
And what does that cut everybody back to twenty twenty?
I don't wanna oversteak, cause people can't hear.
I mean, their budget is set at fifty-nine points.
So if you went revenue neutral, what it would do is take you back to, everyone's budget back to what it was in twenty four, five. And you would have to cut about a hundred thousand dollars in services somewhere so that you could do your increases for insurance. Those are really your only increases. Work comp, liability and health insurance.
I mean, the cuts you guys made got us, the cuts you made with the one point fours and the, and the.
Didn't get us to revenue neutral.
It got you real close, didn't it? You were down to fifty-seven.
No, 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 that, that was a wrong number.
It was a wrong number?
Yeah.
Let me show you what it'll do. I can trade. So if you wanna get down to revenue, revenue neutral, you have to cut out three hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars eight thirty-nine.
Why would we spend three hundred and twenty-nine thousand more this year? Why are we projecting we're gonna do that anyway?
Because of all the increases that you did. Fifty thousand for health insurance, okay? Or for liability insurance, then you did a little bit of increase for work comp than you do for health insurance.
Health insurance is the big one.
Right, and then you pay for all five commissioners. You added twenty-five thousand for a finance person, you added.
But, but we, but that, that's really.
Those are all additions though.
Right, but we have subtractions. For any addition that I suggested, I had subtractions. So we cut, uh, IT from three hundred down to two fifty. We cut, um, uh, the mental health all the way out, that's another hundred thousand. I mean, we cut those things.
But you, the sheriff didn't get cut.
So we didn't. The what?
The sheriff didn't get cut.
In twenty twenty-five.
He didn't get cut in twenty twenty-six either.
Oh.
Yeah. We, when we, when they adjusted that to go back to twenty twenty-five numbers, they left the sheriff at his twenty twenty-six request.
That's where all that money comes from.
And the nine-one-one.
Yes.
I know I'm beating the drum here, but that's two hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, yeah.
So, so what if we were to just, the only expense we've actually chosen to add is the nine-one-one, because it was going to be worse if we didn't.
Yeah.
If it came here, it would've been worse.
Yeah, oh yeah. You would've been to sixty-two point five.
And so. So what if we did revenue neutral plus two hundred thousand? Because that's justifiable to me, to add that to.
Um, the only reason why I say I don't think you can do that is because the sheriff's already given his raises.
But he said that he had an empty position that he was giving those raises for, so.
I don't know, I think we would wanna talk to him before you go making that kinda, kinda assumption.
I didn't make an assumption, he said it.
I did. I didn't hear it.
It's not an assumption, did anybody else hear it?
What?
That the raises that they give, it was because they.
Yes, I did hear that.
So I mean, it's not an assumption, I didn't make it up.
Right, I did hear that, but again.
In twenty twenty-five, but not in twenty twenty-six.
Correct, I, I would agree with that statement also. That's why I believe the sheriff came back. I believe the sheriff has every intention of hiring another person. I believe that. You know, but once you give him the budget, it is up to him what he does with the budget, so. Well, how do we get on the subject of the sheriff? Sorry.
Well, we were, we were talking about.
Because we were talking about if we were to be revenue neutral, and the only, because we made cuts to justify things we added. We did. It's just a matter of fact, we didn't spend anything extra there because we made cuts in other places. So if we were to go revenue neutral and add two hundred thousand, because that's what we're adding for nine-on-one, which is non-negotiable. So revenue neutral plus two hundred thousand, how much do we have to cut out of that to do that? Cause like I said, the nine-on-one is justifiable. Because that to me, that was an extra expense that we added that was non-negotiable. We had to add that two hundred thousand dollars, or it would've been worse.
That puts everybody back to twenty twenty-five. Right. If we, if we go revenue neutral, everybody goes back to twenty twenty-five numbers. Then we have to increase it by two hundred thousand.
That's right. That's what, that's what, that was what I was trying to say. Cause to me, that's justifiable.
Yeah, two and forty.
Well, we were already, we were already giving them fifty, so technically it'd be a hundred ninety. So I was just, may use a round number of two hundred.
So two forty, no, you're gonna be at two forty, you're gonna have to do fifty for insurance, you're gonna have to do probably another twenty-four work comp, seventy. So you're gonna be right at this two twenty-nine.
We say we're going to have to, but we can change those insurance plans.
You can't change your liability insurance.
Okay, I, I thought you were talking about the health.
I'm talking about work comp and liability.
Okay.
Which then brings us back up to three something.
David's packing up.
Well, I know, my battery's running dead, there's no reason, and I'm not gonna plug it in, so I'm just getting ready to bolt.
So.
We're closing in on that eight o'clock.
Yeah.
Or maybe twenty.
And then we passed it.
You know, but we're gaining followers here, the number.
Well, how many followers you got?
Well, right now, thirty-four, so.
Oh, you're watching that?
Yeah.
This is not an Instagram page. Those are not followers for you.
They're following our meeting.
Um, so what have we decided?
I haven't decided nothing. What do you guys want to do as a body?
I would like to wrap this up, um.
So let's, we got yours and mine, the combined. And then we got revenue neutral.
And then I wanna utilize yours, which you've done, and.
But it don't take us to revenue neutral. To get to revenue neutral, you're talking another two minutes.
Revenue neutral plus, what's revenue neutral from their budget? How much does that cut out?
Three hundred and twenty-nine thousand eight thirty-nine.
So you only really need to cut a hundred and twenty-nine, cause we're gonna add two hundred back. You understand the logic.
Where are you gonna get the two hundred from?
She's adding it to the revenue neutral.
It would be ad valorem. We, because, and it's justifiable ad valorem, because we added nine-on-one, that amount, that's actual.
But then we gotta add in liability insurance and works comp. So what's that bringing up to you?
About seventy.
So then you need to cut another seventy.
So two seventy. Two seventy. So revenue neutral plus two seventy.
Just rounded up to three hundred.
Now we're right back at where you guys were at, so.
Okay, revenue neutral, two seven.
What's that changed the mill to?
Uh.
Fifty-nine point nine three six.
Yeah, so, okay, fifty-eight.
Fifty-eight. So that's where I said to go with to begin with.
But where, what are you gonna cut?
Twenty-five percent off every commodity.
You're gonna cut two, you're gonna cut two hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars out of the budget.
Let, okay, let's talk about cuts. Are we done cutting?
I think, I think that what we went in as a base, we didn't cut, we added to all those, all those funds to bring them back up.
Yeah, yeah, I get that.
And then we went to, once we had the base, then we had your cuts.
Across the board.
Which brought us to, which, which brought us to another deal. You know, which brought us to fifty-nine, whatever, I don't know what it was.
We, we went in there, we added because we had to by law, by statute, we had to, okay, we did that. But then we went, but then we went through each block and we said,
Gotcha.
Yeah, the favorable word.
Okay.
Can we cut, can we cut? So we went through each one, and the ones we couldn't cut, we didn't touch. The ones we could, and there were some that were already cut, so we didn't touch that. And then there was people that weren't touched, we cut one point four percent, okay?
Okay.
And that got us to fifty, that got us to fifty-nine point nine three six, okay?
Which is the published.
That is the published, and I think it ended up, I think it ended up giving us a, it gave us roughly three hundred thousand dollars in cash reserve. And then I went back and added the sheriff, the one point four percent from the sheriff, which put us down to fifty-nine point six eight six with three hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars in cash reserve. And then when we added yours, that dropped it another, that went up to.
We needed to have another thirty-seven thousand.
Well, yeah, well, the thirty-seven, the, the, the sheriff gave us what we need to cut.
Okay, and then let's stop right there.
Okay.
Susan, are you going through and taking the five percent out of everybody's?
Then that's not the five percent, because the five percent that you added was fifty-nine point nine three zero and gave us four hundred and fifty thousand, gave us another hundred thousand dollars.
I done it in the budget.
Yeah.
Well, which I mean, would compensate for the sixty-five thousand in commodities.
Mr. Bearpower, did you give Susan a copy of your, so she, so rather than being twenty-five, she just figured it at five?
If we needed to.
I put it out to the side. I've already got it like out, like.
Well, she did the formulas on the side, too.
You don't need that.
Seven fifty to two hundred.
Yeah, but just so you can double check them and align with what he was envisioning.
He said twenty-five percent? Yeah, I did, as I was going through them, yeah. Yeah, yeah.
So you have one?
Oh, you got.
So, do you want to decide on it tonight, or do you wanna wait and decide it on Monday? Cause the only other date we have this week is Friday for commissioners.
No, we don't have Friday for me, this was it.
Oh, this is it? Okay, well then Monday it is. It's either tonight or Monday.
This is it.
Or we push it to the end until, cause we don't have to publish to the clerk until the first of October, and I really don't wanna push it that far. I really wanna just get this done.
Do you wanna wait until Monday and?
I don't have a, I, I.
Sleep on it and listen to other people?
I'm fine with that too. I'm, when I started the meeting, I actually really wanted everything done now. But the fact that we're talking about, we have a game plan moving forward now, um, is there any way you can print out this for us before we leave tonight?
Do you want those numbers already put into the budget? The five percent?
That'd be nice.
Okay.
So that probably takes some time.
That, that'll give me, you'll have to give me a little bit of time, cause I gotta go in and redo the R and R two to give you an accurate number.
So then let's wait till you have them, have them ready for us in the next couple of days. We can stop in and pick them up or email them to us.
Does everybody have Excel that they can print?
Yeah, but if you could just print one and scan it, that'd be certainly easier.
Okay, I can do that.
Yeah.
Because these sheets are really hard to scroll around on the cell phone, and so.
Yes, they are.
Okay.
I, 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 no, 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 I'm not trying to be difficult, but I would love to have that document tonight.
How long does it take, Susan?
How long?
Give me fifteen minutes.
Okay, it'll take that long?
And before you go, I have something to say to you. I apologize for being stressed at the beginning of the meeting, and, and if I came across terse or anything, that's my apologies. It wasn't, it wasn't personal, it was not personal. And I asked you a very important question, and, and you gave me the answer, it surprised me. But it also told me that I like, I like the interaction tonight. You understand what I'm getting at? When you told me that this is the first time commissioners have come and talked to you and did this in this forum, where we actually were here as a forum, as a group. And we're able to talk to each other and, and, and do this, this, that's, that's good, that's very good. And, and I appreciate that, okay? I know it's hard for you, um, cause you're used to doing things your way, and I get that, I get that, and I respect that. But part of the change in the county is listening to new and not you. But all of us, listening to new and different ideas from different people, because I'm learning things from every one of you, okay? So I hope you learn something from us, I hope you, you take away something, because I certainly took a lot away from this meeting, so I thank you, okay?
May I respond?
Absolutely.
Um, and, and this is no offense to you. Um, there have been a lot of statements made about me that are not fair. I have invited every single person into my office to sit down and have conversations, and I've never been given that courtesy. Um, I, the, the, the advisory board was, uh, was created, and I welcomed it because I feel like they supported everything that I've been saying for the last three years. So I have no problem with that. What I, what I would've liked to have was maybe a little bit more me being involved, because I, I do have the history of the statutes. I do, I can lead and say, hey, there, here are some things you probably ought to think about, here's the historical data. But I didn't, I didn't get that opportunity until tonight. And so, um, I think when you first came in, you said, what, what's one thing that you need? And I said, just a little bit of respect. And I will sit and do this all day long, because this is, this is what I love to do. I love to do numbers. And I'm not going to put my integrity on the line, because I've done this for a long time. I will always be helpful to anybody that asks for the help. And so, um, I've never, I've never tried to be unprofessional. But this, this does not bother me, I can do this all day long. So, um, I can bring ideas, I can tell you what works, what doesn't work. But that's the one thing, I do know how to do these budgets, cause I've done them for a long time. So, thank you.
Thank you. You should.
And, and one, one more since we're commenting, um, were you here when we did the budget committee?
Yeah.
Were you here when we voted for that?
Mm-hmm.
I just, I would just wanna thank everybody for being open-minded to that proposal, yeah, because I do think it changed the, the way we went about this process. And even though we picked it apart a little bit and put our finishing touches on, it still was a building block for us, and we were still able to watch all that, uh, collaboration. So I.
I have one last thing, if I may, sure.
All right.
So, this, this, it's been two months, okay? Wow, what a huge learning curve, huge. Um, I'm not, I'm still not done. Um, I, I appreciate all the ideas that you guys have brought to the table. I appreciate the people in the community who, who, you know, the criticisms and accolades. I personally needed both. I needed to hear it, I needed to hear it from both sides, I needed to hear what I can do better, what I can't do better, and what the team here is doing. And I, I don't use the team, the word team lightly, but that's, that's the world I grew up in. Everything's team-based, okay? Um, and we can't, I can't do this myself, I need my team. And my team includes the people in, in the county. So thank you to everybody, thank you to the, the, the budget committee. You know, I really wanted to, I really, really wanted to just take their work and say, okay, let's just implement it. Unfortunately, like everything else, we didn't give them clear guidance. Uh, they can't reach inside our, and see what's in our heart, what's in our mind, they did their best. But I did use their product to the best, to the fullest extent possible. And, and I think that gives a lot of credit to Joe, to you and your team, okay?
Thank you very much for the whole committee.
Thanks, sir. That's all I have, Joe.
All right, thank you. We're gonna wait, so fifteen minute recess?
Yeah, fifteen minute recess.
Okay. Get up and walk.
And I have ice cream at home, though. You know my wife is liking the big ones. She knows that you guys have never badgered me about home. I'm, I'm fighting him really hard.
I think it's below what was published, Jason.
We're gonna go down and read something, have you had any?
I think it's below what was published.
You wanna start or do something?
I think it's below what was published.
Sure, first. You don't mind?
Cheeseburgers?
Sure.
Yeah.
Fries or salad?
As far as where you live.
What do you want on the salad?
Whatever, I'm not picky. I'm an ex-GI, I'm a retired GI. I eat everything. Thanks, sir.
I like the way you did that.
Appreciate it.
Jason, if you wanna know where our main increases were, hey there.
Remember the two percent.
Hi, you have now?
Lower than two percent, lower than three percent.
Well, I hope we do it right by the people, so I really, I, I hope we do it right. It's always, it's always everybody's own. Thank you. You have to look at the camera when you say hi to them.
That's the twenty-five percent.
That's the twenty-five percent.
Did you want a copy of that?
Yeah.
You did good. You got it for fifty thousand.
Huh?
Said what?
Fifty thousand in one year, that's great. You gotta do it another year.
No, we can't do it another year, this is a reset year, we look with a strategic plan for next year. That's how we hope to, that's how we hope to, we have to, there's, we don't have a choice, so. You know, I hope, I hope, I hope we can do it. We're gonna, there's no hope, we're going to have to do it. But we're gonna have to start now, as soon as the budgets. We need to start doing our strategic plan, and we will talk. Yes.
I couldn't remember the story.
That's the way it happened.
Well-
I know, you know, such a poor me.
Sorry to keep you so late. She's like, I know we-
Stay till it's done.
Ten year, busy, not paid that from yourself.
Would you do the all sounds, or?
Yeah, it was kind of, it was kind of-
Strategically.
We were, they did the same thing, and said, ten years.
The, 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 automatically, that's from what the budget committee gave. Um, everybody's, that allows, because that's the valuation.
Doing all the N R Ps.
Hey, hey.
That was a valuation.
Breathe, you're doing great, you're doing great, just breathe.
Heck, over there.
And so, we just did, we went there and we took that valuation. So we reduced one to five people.
Defaulting on their ones, on cars right now. So we can't, we better tighten our hood.
And really, if we don't put that money where it's going to cap, go by the, if something came up. That's the thing, if you don't have the money, you can't spell it, so we don't love your money, you're not about to cut things.
Do you, do you know why, why you had the rest?
That's the worst thing with you.
Do you know why you had the same-
Oh, you are.
We're all in the same boat. At that point, guess what? We go back to the village, we, we take care of each other as a village, and that's just- Yeah, it would not be the first time in history this has happened, it would not be the lifetime in history, but, you know, it speaks volumes.
What, what increase did everyone get, was it one point two?
Industrial show.
Because that was valuation? One point four, one point four. What did we give the sheriff originally?
Four point three.
Four point three.
It's actually four point three four six.
But then we took off one point four from it.
I think that's what I wrote him.
Yeah. Because I remember, it should have been like three, it, it, yeah, every round of the numbers, like four point-
Don't send me a message while asking me all this detail, because I don't know.
You know it will.
I'm gonna say, I don't know, Jason.
Can I have all those supporting documents?
No. Those are working documents, you can't have them.
You know, the, the thing that, you're not even sure if it's, you do the best you can, you plant, you know, how's that work, um? You plant for the worst and hope for the best. You go through this, all this work, and you're just really, really hurt. The economy doesn't take it, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, you really do.
Because that's, that, that's out of your standard of control.
Yeah.
Are we ready? We're wait, oh, we're waiting on this.
Thank you.
Almost done.
Also, while we're waiting on this, we never finished the conversation. When do you want to reengage this? And I didn't finish my statement, I went into, I did finish it, I feel much better about our process after going through this tonight, so thank you. But when do you want to reengage this? Next Monday?
Monday. I mean, that gives us a chance to kind of look things over and-
Okay.
Listen.
Yes, sir.
How many viewers did we have, two hundred and twenty?
Thirty-one, oh, twenty-nine, no.
Two, twenty-nine current.
Losing, we're losing them.
People are like, it's late, I'm going to bed.
Well, it says twenty, twenty-nine current, right?
Well, yeah, we got up to thirty-four, though.
We got up to two hundred and twenty views.
Well, that, but we were at a time, we had.
Is that all for the year?
No, that should just be for this stream.
I'm just gonna say, David, your little two hour time limit is not working out so good.
Yeah.
It's not because of me.
Really? Let me look at the, let me look at the last agenda, and how many beerbauer do I see on that list?
Well, because some of that gets to me by default.
You can always say, you know what, let's just scratch that, push it up.
By default.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's things you guys brought up, and then it gets tabled, and then it gets my name on it.
I think it's done out of luck, though.
Next year will be somebody else's turn to be the, somebody else's turn to be the chairman, chairperson.
You're doing fine, David.
I ain't gonna beat you.
Okay, so are you good with fifty-nine point three nine one?
Is that the?
So we went below last year's mill.
That puts you four hundred and fifty thousand in reserves.
Did you hear that?
But we cut a lot of budgets real hard.
Did you hear that? So the mill, the mill right now is what?
Fifty-nine point three nine one. So we went lower than even the, is that lower than the budget committee's recommendation? Yeah, so we-
And we got four hundred, how much?
Four hundred and fifty-one.
Four hundred and fifty-one thousand, so.
And, and bigger reserves.
Thank you.
Yep, all fifty.
No, I mean, thanks, thanks, guys, this, this takes a big load off of my shoulders and-
I gotta go, oops. I gotta go put this in my office.
And I'm just gonna hit it one more time on that nine on one, we gave, we gave another, an extra two, two hundred thousand towards one thing, that's a big deal.
Yes.
That's a big deal.
But like I, like I said, this, once this budget's finalized, we have really got to jump on the strategic planning committee. We've really got to get on that. We gotta create a strategic-
Monday, Monday we'll get the planning commission going for the zoning, and then we can start working on something else. Because we'll have budget out, we'll have zoning.
Is that what you're talking about?
No. No. Strategic planning is a plan.
Strategic plan is what we're going to do moving-
You're talking about another committee, a different one, or the?
Mm-hmm, yeah. It's an, it'd be an advisory, but it's creating like a five-year plan of where we want to see things go.
Well, since you're talking about plans, um-
You don't, well, Jennifer's coming to rescue.
I forgot the name of the other one, but it's from like-
You locked it?
Comprehensive.
Or did you leave the key in there?
One, a strategic plan, just for going back and-
It breaks it down by, by each department. What, what we control.
Flash drive, uh, can you print, save it? Can you print? I can, I can print from here, yeah. Yeah, that's all I need. I've got the jump drive.
But really-
I am making all kinds of money, man. I'm making crazy money. Every thirty minutes, somebody says, like, I have another fifty-five thousand dollars in loan. This is like the fourth one today, that, people give me loans left and right on my phone.
You're getting spammer loans?
Oh, man, these are awesome.
Spammer loans?
Yeah.
What are they?
They spam my, they, they, what, they spam my phone.
Oh, they want to offer you a loan?
Yeah, you know, fifty, seventy, call me, I'm just like, wow, okay.
I don't get any, I don't get any of them.
So he's good.
Say what? What'd you say?
All they have is your phone number to track you, so you're good.
I just keep getting offered health insurance.
Well, it's better than life insurance, right? Oh, you guys.
I think that we're smiling now, the one, all these, tomorrow comes, we're gonna have, our phones are gonna be blown up by departments.
I don't know, five percent, yeah, or one point four, right?
Come on, can't tell me you don't feel better.
Don't what?
Can't tell me you don't feel better.
What, that this is about over?
Yeah.
I'd be glad, just one more box to check.
Do I, do I need to be in a meeting to give you updates on public works?
We're supposed to be doing it by the liaison monthly, so we probably ought to set it up on a, on a scale, scheduled to update each other on that.
I just, I don't want to break the rules.
Well, we could really, it's not on the agenda tonight, we can't discuss it.
Oh, really?
Right, yeah, no, we gotta stick to the agenda. So, really, I mean, we're done with everything that's on the agenda, so.
Can you mod? I'm just messing.
You know, no, we can't even modify that. We gotta stick with what's on it.
They can before the meeting starts, but if it starts, yeah, it has to be published.
But that's all right, we covered everything on it, so that's good.
I was talking to somebody, they told me that Elm Creek Lake, they used to hire people when they first made it, to go out there with, well, when they were building the dam, but these guys literally had like tree trunks that they had cut, and the guy on each, the guy on each side was just like pounding, use it to pound it, to pound, to compact the dirt, I'm like, and they paid him fifty cents a day.
Wow.
That's what they paid.
It was a W-
W P A, yeah.
I'm, I'm gathering information, I'm getting ready for our next, uh, discussion on that, so.
Well, I finally found the seismic, found the whole thing. I just, I'm looking for some-
There's something we'll wait, you know, when the meeting happens.
Yeah.
You know, when you put it back on the agenda.
Hey, your viewership went up by two.
Are we, are we holding to that fifteen minutes? Really, we don't even need to stay in session if we want to go ahead and adjourn.
It's up to you, sir, I'm good.
So, I guess she needs to record it, so. No. We'll just let her get that printed, and then we'll- It's a Star Trek laser on.
On stun.
Phaser, yeah, phaser on stun.
Yeah.
And actually, we are there. Not quite at that level yet, but-
Well, you seen that one-
Stun gun, stun gun is a late, you know, they're stunning.
We have something worse than that, you see the one that we have that, um, it makes you feel heat?
Yeah, yeah, I've seen those, non-lethal.
Right.
Yeah. But we are at the, uh, just not beaming people up yet.
Right, not yet. I was at Wismer, they had MTHL out there, I thought that was the coolest thing. That's when MTHL came out, and I don't know whether they deployed that, but all you needed was two, two Humvees, and one with a radar, and they all went with a weapon system, I was like, wow, that was amazing.
Mm-hmm. Well, I see now that, uh, a lot of prisons are using, uh, cell phone jamming tech, technology, which, we, we were using that in two thousand and five, when I was over in Iraq. We were jamming, jamming cell phones and all kinds of other frequencies, too. Huh?
Yeah, well, you have to, because they were using cell phones to blow things up.
Yeah, yeah, they, they would, uh, wire their, they, they use, they use, uh, dryer timers, washer timers. They, uh, for, for a while, when, when the first, first waves went over there, they were, a lot of units were carrying those little molerolas, so they could communicate on, you know, without being on the, the military radio. Well, kids, people were just walking up and looking at what frequency they were on. And then the bad guy would switch over to that frequency and set, set the bomb up. And so when you keyed the mic yourself, it would-
They're smart, well, they were taught, they were taught by us.
Iranians taught them a lot, too.
So.
Yeah.
It's-
Because when we left, the, the Iranians were teaching them how to use copper, you know, amongst their deals, because it's, will melt.
Shape charges?
Yeah, it will melt, and then when it goes through the metal, it just goes through it like molten lava.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. When we first went over there, we were using hillbilly armor, made our own armor, yeah. And then, uh, then we started getting all this grade equipment. And we did, our unit got quite a bit of stuff. They're gonna have their reunion at Elm Creek.
You guys gonna like gear up and have float balls and high balls and all that stuff?
No, 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 just-
Just a bunch of guys sitting on-
Just to get back together, yeah, eating and drinking, telling war stories, remembering.
In the first Gulf War, they had foxer conical vehicles. And they actually took rounds from our own people, because they didn't know what they were, they had stupid and stupid with the Bradley. Luckily, they had a nice Lieutenant Campbell that told them to get behind the Brazleys. And you could hear the commander, the tank, the tank commander, he was full permanent, talking about, ceasefire, damn it, there are, there are.
Happens in every war.
And Lieutenant Bob Campbell, who was a good friend of mine, I go, Lieutenant, did you, how do your pants? And he said, oh my. He's taking fifty cal, look at that, nope, nope, with the main gun, it's fifty cal rounds.
Stood in that turret myself.
That happens.
That and the Mark nineteen. You getting what?
Legs, knees, I didn't get up and take those steps.
You still got the fan? Nope, you don't got the fan on.
You have such arrogance in life, and think you know everything, and then you come back, and you might have been in a special force unit, unit. He lost three members, he lost his leg, because he didn't recalibrate GPS. When you, it didn't matter, he protected, it's still Z in mind. If you don't have your eyes on the target, you can't, I don't care, it's a road out here, I, I give you a good example. My garden got sprayed by the county three years in a row, and it took me, the third year, I finally figured out that he's crazy. I called my county commissioner, and guess what? I, I did get off it. I went down there, see, he didn't look that far from me, but, uh, doctor, his wife had a heart attack. That, that, they just, when he gets back in the saddle, you, it, it's not that important. Sir, he got back in the saddle, and he actually come up and seen me hurt. And you know, it was only like three or four days, it was going to the fourth of July, and I had tomatoes, oranges, tomatoes.
Really?
I got, my whole garden was dead. And he, they were not too unhappy about it.
Jennifer's getting, all of you, do you, does anybody need the paper copy?
I would, if you got one, did you print them?
Just got one.
Did you make copies?
I can.
Yeah.
You're gonna kill trees, okay?
Yes. They're renewable resources, grow more.
Is it coming out of your commodities? Clever, clever.
He, he was joking.
You can have, yes.
He cut it all out of our commodity.
So anyway, I told, uh, my commissioner that if my garden got sprayed next year, I was gonna hire a lawyer to take care of it. You know, three years in a row, you'd be pissed.
Well, he caught, we happened to be home when he was coming towards us, that's how I figured it out.
No, no, I figured it out, because the, it rained, and the fields couldn't be sprayed out there, it had to- And the fields couldn't be sprayed out there, it had to be the county. That's how I figured it out.
And he agreed it was, the guy did.
No, the guy that sprayed it, still the guy. He is a friend of mine, but, uh, the commissioner said, yeah, yeah, and guess what? It never happened again.
He put a, I don't know, he put a picture on to one, the corner mile, every direction.
No.
But my neighbor's the one, he, he-
The pin?
No, the highlighter.
Oh.
And he showed up and I was blowing my grass.
I don't know where my highlighter is.
And he invited me over to his truck and I, I was visiting with him. And he started to show me this weapon because he thought that I was mad at him and I told him, this guy was twice my size, and I told him my size.
That's old school.
He said, you're showing me this weapon?
That's when we were in B D U's.
It's crazy, he's like, I compare my gear to my son's and I'm like, wow. Like, he's showing me his kit and I'm like, how do you put that on? You know, cause it's, it's technology that's changed.
Oh, yeah.
I'm like, how do you, how do you put that on? And he had to show it to me, I'm like, what, it's amazing, it's really amazing. But the kid, he's, he swiped my Kevlar. I turned around one day, I'm like, where's my Kevlar? I just, it's in my house, it's on the shelf. I'm like, you took my Kevlar?
We, uh, then I got pencils that are ACU too.
Oh, yeah, yeah, the, the chocolate chip, no, yeah.
And I think I even got some that are desert camo.
I still have my, I still have my, my, uh, my Gulf War uniform, the chocolate chip.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, remember, they, 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 they used to allow you to put mission accomplished on, patch on your shoulder.
Right.
So, when I, when I finally came home, right before I redeployed, I had that patch on there. And I look at it now, I'm like, man, you were a skinny little-
I started out, I start, I started out with, uh-
So you're not gonna put it on again?
There is no way this, there's no way this beautiful body-
How about you, David, does your-
What's that?
Does your uniform fit?
No. No, not even close.
I still have my mess dress.
Yeah.
I have my mess, oh dude, that, I have-
I think my, I think my ACU still fit.
I, I got a phone call two months ago from Chief Massari, right, retired Chief Massari. He called me and he was like, hey, this is Chief so-and-so, and I was just in there thinking, thinking, I was like, he's calling me from Germany. And like, Adam is like, yeah, I'm like, he's a chief, so he's in the United, right? So he's like, hey, I just want to call you, you retired now, blah, blah, he goes, I just want to say thanks for everything, you know, you know how you meet people? Anyways, he was pretty cool, but he was, he said, uh, my last appointment is first. And then when I got back, uh, I bought a new set of mess dress. And, you know, I didn't, I didn't retire after that deployment, I stayed, so I bought a new set of mess dress and, and, anyways, the old one didn't fit. And I gave it to him, he goes, I still wear that mess, I retired and, you know, with that mess dress, I'm like, what?
Thank you.
Took both your whole career and fit in the one, thank you, ma'am.
No sta- staple on the coffee?
You're good, Mr. Beerbauer, you need to unmute.
Yes, we, we were waiting. We didn't want to do it without you in here to record it.
Chairman, I move we adjourn the meeting.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, meeting adjourned. Thank you for the- Newest.